Ladies and gentlemen, I will call this evening's session of the 2019 Acton Town Meeting to order. And as we discussed last night, the first order of business is for the town manager to speak to the employee awards. Mr. Town Manager, you may proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm John Mangiari. I'm the town manager. Nice to see you all again tonight. Tonight, I have the pleasure of celebrating the 14th Annual Joseph Lally Employee of the Year Award and the 10th Annual Public Safety Award. This is an award named after Joseph Lally, who was a philanthropist and lived an inspiring life. Mr. Lally was raised by Italian immigrants in Maynard in a house without plumbing. He worked in the woolen mills until contracting rheumatic fever. Because of his illness, he was forced to seek another vocation and graduated from Pittsburgh State and spent a good part of his working life teaching throughout New England. To supplement his income, Mr. Lally entered into many ventures: selling vegetables, running a bowling alley, selling stamps, and starting a driving school. He lived frugally and wisely, investing in the stock market and gas and oil partnerships and real estate. He was one of two gentlemen that helped form a charitable foundation that has been very good to the town of Acton and the community over the last, over the many years. Mr. Lally's qualities of hard work, perseverance, and dedication are traits that we look for in nominating employees for the awards we're about to celebrate. For the first of these two awards, I'm pleased to announce, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, that the recipient of the Joseph Lally Municipal Employee of the Year Award for 2018 is James McCray, our Veterans Services Officer. I'd like, I'd like to ask James to come up and join me for a minute, and we'll, we'll talk a little bit about why he's being recognized this year. James has been our Veterans Service Officer since 2011. Prior to this, he served in the United States Army Corps of Engineers from 2004 to 2009. He served two tours in Mosul, Iraq, a 12-month tour and a 14-month tour. Military service runs in the family. His two grandfathers were Navy veterans for World War II, and they both lived in Acton for many years. Municipal service also runs in the family, as his maternal grandfather was our town clerk here in Acton in the 60s and 70s for many years. Since James started in his role here as our Veterans Officer, he's been advocating tirelessly for the veterans and for the families of veterans in our community. Just as an example, last year at a staff meeting, he shared a story about how he worked with a gentleman for months navigating the federal bureaucracies and looking at all the discharge papers and medical bills and all these different things. And after all this hard work, he was able to have this gentleman qualify for a very large, very substantial financial benefit from the federal government, which was well-deserved and well overdue. And it was, it was something that James was very proud of, and we were all very proud of, too. When others would give up, James never did. He kept plugging and pushing until he got the resolution for this veteran. Many of you see Jim at the monthly breakfast that he cooks at the Human Services and Senior Building. This, this event builds camaraderie amongst the attendees and is really a great way for veterans to socialize and get together on a regular basis. It's certainly not a job requirement to cook a hot, delicious breakfast for 50 people every month, but Jim does it with a smile, and he's, he's very good in the kitchen. Each year on Veterans Day, he works with local volunteers to put on an excellent and impressive ceremony to recognize this event. This past year, he coordinated with the National Guard to have National Guardsmen attend, and it was a great ceremony. Also on Veterans Day, he's a part of a group that he works with the Rotary and the High School Honor Society to put on a big breakfast for over 300 veterans and their families. This is a great event that people love every year. With, with a very full plate and working tirelessly on behalf of our community, he's always willing to help. When Boxborough said that their Veterans Officer was going through a transition, Jim stepped out without taking, without thinking about it. Regardless of where people live, if they're a veteran and need help, James steps up, and that's what he does. The town of Acton and our veterans and their families are very lucky to have James. Congratulations.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, again.
Say something?
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much. John, thank you for that. It has truly been an honor working with veterans and surviving spouses in Acton these past eight years. Sometimes I joke that I'm an Army of One in my office, but I wouldn't be able to perform my job without all the other departments in town. From day one, everyone has been very supportive of my department's goals and objectives. I'm truly grateful for this recognition, and even though it hasn't been finalized yet, I'm looking forward to serving the community on an even broader scale in the near future. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So as I mentioned, there's, there's two awards. The second award is the Public Safety Award, and I'm pleased to announce, on behalf of the Board of Selectmen, that the recipient of the Joseph Lally Public Safety Employee of the Year Award is, for 2018, is Detective Michael O'Raclio. Detective O'Raclio, please come on up. As the kids call him, Officer Mike. I call him Officer Mike, too. So Detective O'Raclio has been an officer here in town for 14 years, and he currently serves as a School Resource Officer at the Elementary School and Special Education Programs. He serves a valuable role in this community, in the school system, making positive connections and having positive interactions with students on a daily basis. He does a great job addressing concerns in the schools with families before they escalate. He routinely handles issues such as security truancy, emergency preparedness, educational instruction, and family assistance. When not working with our children, he engages in direct and special interactions with the public in matters such as domestic abuse, victim assistance, mental health awareness. He's the primary point of contact with the Council on Aging and the Police Department, and works very well to help with elders in the community. To say that Detective O'Raclio spins many plates at the same time would be an understatement. He teaches classes to 6th and 7th and 8th graders on subjects such as substance abuse, peer pressure, bullying, cybersecurity, and he does big programs with other police officers on Alice, which is a school safety protocol. He serves as a liaison to the Juvenile Court. He's a, he's the Child Crimes and Sexual Assault Investigator, the Domestic Violence Liaison, and he's a member of the hoarding team. He also plays a critical role in our community to address issues surrounding suicide. Detective O'Raclio is a certified QPR trainer, and he regularly provides suicide awareness trainings and, and helps with that issue in our community. Having recently attended one of these trainings, I can tell you that he does a fabulous job, an unbelievable job with a very difficult subject matter, and it's, I think we're lucky to have him doing it. He's, he's scheduled to work an eight-hour day, but that's hardly ever the case. He'll, he'll take calls from parents or from school officials well into the night. If you ask Mike why he does this, he would say, "It just needs to be done." He's always upbeat, motivated, and ready to serve. He'll accept any assignment, task, or request with a smile. Detective O'Raclio is truly a dedicated employee. Congratulations.
Thank you, Town Manager. as well, obviously, this town meeting, but I appreciate you guys being here to help me celebrate this award. I'd like to thank first and foremost the Steinberg Lally Foundation for their continued generosity towards the town of Acton. I'd like to thank Chief Rich Burrows and his command staff for the nomination, Town Manager John Mangiari, and the Board of Selectmen for their approval. And lastly, my wife Jill, my two daughters Gabrielle and Juliana, for their continued support as I juggle work, home life, and college life at the same time. I'm humbled and honored to serve the town of Acton, as well as be this year's recipient of the Public Safety Employee of the Year. Thank you. I now recognize Ms. Gardner, who I think has a couple more awards or statements to make.
Well, when I joined the Board of Selectmen this time, there were two women on the board, and I have enjoyed the past two years working with both of them. I'm sad to see them go, as next year I'll be the only woman on the board. But I'd like to recognize Katie Green, this year's chairman. Her preparation, her meticulous attention to detail, her six years of service to the town on the board has been exceptional, and we all know what is ahead of her in a couple of months. So we wish her well. And Katie, if you could come down.
Thank you. Oh, that's wonderful. Thank you so much.
It says Katie on it?
Oh, that's so nice. That's wonderful. Thank you, Joan.
All right. All right. Let me give you a hand. All right. Now.
This has been a wonderful past six years for me, and I just want to take one moment to thank my wonderful fiancee, Michael Walpole, who has supported me for the past three and a half years on the board and has put up with a lot of late nights and a lot of rants when I come home very late from a meeting. And he's stuck with me through all this, so I'm very excited for moving on to new adventures with him, and just very grateful to all of you for putting your trust and faith in me for these past six years. It's, it's truly been an honor. And I want, at this time, to take this opportunity to recognize and thank Janet Adachi for her many years of service to the town, including the past nine years on the Board of Selectmen. We're asked to keep these recognitions very brief, but since this is a tribute to Janet, I've decided that instead of cutting down my presentation at all, I'm just planning to speak a little bit faster. When, when I was first elected to the board, Janet was beginning her second term and her first stint as chair. And since our terms aligned and Janet was chair my first year, she became, she became a mentor to me in many ways. And it's from her that I learned to take copious notes during our meetings, although she certainly holds a record for the most legal pads used. She also taught me the importance of being prepared. While never a Boy Scout, Janet definitely adhered to their motto. She came to every meeting, having read every sentence in her packet, having researched additional material, and having typed a list of questions. And while applicants and presenters may have had to parse out the 10 or 12 questions that she strung together as just one question, they were always thoughtful and important ones that helped all of us understand an issue better. In addition to always being prepared, Janet is always willing to step up. In her time on the board, she's taken on a wide variety of issues. She's a resident expert in all things water-related, helping to update the Chapter X Stormwater Bylaw and Regulations, putting together and serving as the liaison for the West Acton Sewer Action Advisory Committee, and serving as liaison for the Acton Water District. She's also been a steadfast advocate for affordable housing and the Minuteman High School. She served on the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. She chaired the Board of Selectmen twice, and she spent the better part of a year coordinating an organized and very successful process for hiring our new town manager. Without Janet, the Board of Selectmen would have accomplished far less than it has during her three terms. She's also been a font of knowledge and support for me over the years. Janet helped me get up to speed when I was first elected, and she was always there to listen and offer advice when I had a question or just needed to kvetch. Her nine years of experience and knowledge will be noticeably absent when the town meeting ends. The board is certainly losing a valuable asset. Acton has benefited greatly from Janet's many contributions on the Conservation Committee, the Community Preservation Committee, in the League of Women Voters, and on the Board of Selectmen. So on behalf of the town, I'd like to thank Janet for her many years of service and congratulate her as she ends her time on the Board of Selectmen. Janet, if you want, come down.
Not with you. I didn't bring my glasses. Thank you. Can I just quickly say a word? I did not come prepared with any comments. This is weird, because normally I would have liked to have been on, stayed on the board and made a tribute to Katie, but given that we were both leaving, I wasn't sure what was going to be happening. As I said in my statement, I think in January, when I announced that I wouldn't be running for reelection, it has been an excellent adventure. I've had a wonderful time learning. It has actually been a lot of fun, but it's been an honor to serve. I've met so many wonderful people over the course of nine years, worked with many wonderful people on the Board of Selectmen, worked with lots of committee members, and excellent, excellent town staff members everywhere, across all departments, including Mr. Detective Pearl over there in the corner, who's hard to miss because he's about two feet taller than I am. But anyhow, but thank you, everybody. And now I have to actually do some work before, before my term is done, so thank you very much. And last but not least, I would like to pay tribute to Katie Green. Katie, Katie is about half my age. She is a marvel at her age. She's, she's old beyond her years, but I realized when she was talking about her parents, she was talking about how old they were, and I realized, oh, gosh, they're younger than I am, which made me feel ancient indeed. But she is just an incredible person. If every person her age were as productive as she is, we would all be in really good shape. But I have to say that I was really grateful to have Katie on the board. There were times when things on the board weren't going very well, and I told Katie that if she hadn't been on the board, I think it would have been much more difficult for me. So I am very grateful to her, and I really didn't mentor her. She's really sharp, and she picked up things very quickly on her own, I think, so. But thank you to Katie, and good luck. Congratulations on the impending marriage. It's actually a good thing. I think you'll enjoy it. And yes, I do have a spouse who has, has been supportive of me throughout the nine years, campaigned in the cold, when it was cold, for campaign season. Looking forward to having me back at home at night, and, but don't tell him that I've already started to make commitments. That will get me out of the house, but I trust he's not watching this on TV, so. Thank you very much, all.
Okay. I think we are now ready to pick up where we left off last night. And where we left off last night was to pick up with Article 12, which is the transfer of real property, 53 River Street. Let me read the motion. This takes a two-thirds majority vote. Mr. Berry moves that the town authorize the transfer of the real property as set forth in the article from the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes to the Board of Selectmen for open space, historic preservation, or recreation purposes. Do I have a second? The motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Berry, I believe by agreement from the other evening, you have four minutes to speak to your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As the slide indicates, the town purchased from free cash in October 2016 this property on River Street for $908,000. There were, in the presentation on, on that evening, proposed uses for the property, which included a park, a possible conservation land, historic restoration of artifacts on the property, and a possible small affordable housing development. The BOS, the Selectmen, created a committee to come up with a proposal for the property in 2017. We've been meeting, there's 10 members of the committee. We've been meeting for over a year now. We kicked off by contracting with the students from the Conway School of Landscape Design to hold the community forum, come up with some ideas and concept plans to develop the property. In February 18, the committee voted to recommend the following uses on the property be restricted to historic preservation, open space, and recreation. The reason we did that was because during our investigation of this property, we found that the dam is in an unsafe condition. It's considered a high hazard, and it needs to be addressed in pretty quick fashion. So we applied to the Community Preservation Committee, and this town meeting approved $75,000 last night to do a, hire some engineers to do a study on the dam, determine what would happen if we breached the dam, and how that would affect downstream properties in terms of the river flow. So we need to restrict the use of this property to purposes that are consistent with those that are fundable under the Community Preservation Act. Again, we purchased this property for general town use with free cash, so theoretically it could be used for any use that this town meeting might determine is appropriate in order to be on legal grounds to be able to use the Community Preservation Act funding the town meeting approved last night. We need to restrict these property, this, the use of this property to these purposes. We considered the affordable housing project. It turned out not to be a viable site for affordable housing. Neither the Housing Authority nor the Community Housing Corporation supported building affordable housing on that site. This was the result of the public forum that the Conway students held, and the highest priority was the public park, a conservation space or recreation area. This is a sketch of the park that the students came up with. Again, it's just a concept, but really, the purpose of this vote tonight is to ensure that we can access the Community Preservation Act funds to come up with a purpose of this property, get the dam probably not rebuilt. It'd be very expensive to do that, probably breached, which is what the state is, prefers to do these days, is breach these dams, allow the river to flow more freely. And there are funds that are available through state grants to do that, so we would anticipate applying for those fundings once we have this study in place to tell us what's going to happen if the dam gets breached. So the Selectmen unanimously recommended, Mr. Moderator, this article for town meeting approval.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. The Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee voted to not recommend this article, as it is a restriction of use on a property that has not been clearly defined for its final purpose. While we are aware of the possibility that this will make the property more easily transferred to CPC, it precludes the ability to dispose the property in a manner that might recoup the costs to acquire this flawed parcel. We prefer a fully fleshed-out proposal that we can vote on, not a change in status for a promise of a plan in the future.
I will now open it up to town meeting members for debate. I see no one running to a microphone. Recognize the speaker, microphone number three.
Tara Fredericks. I know something about this only because I had a lot of people tell me about how much it floods down there, even with the dam where it is. So I have no problem making an exception in this case to the FINCON's policy, because I feel like it's preserving the properties downstream, and I don't think we're going to sell this anyways, so I hope you vote for it. Thank you.
I see no one else standing. Oh, I see one more person standing. I recognize the speaker at microphone one.
David Hahn, 105 School Street. I think this is, for people not familiar with this parcel, it's really one of the key parcels of why Acton even exists. And we think it's not a flawed parcel. It should be a parcel that's celebrated for its long history with the development of Acton, and I encourage everyone to support this article. Thank you.
Now I see no one else standing, so we will vote. This requires a two-thirds vote. Having heard no one speak in opposition, however, to try to speed things along, I think I'll try this with a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
I believe that more than a two-thirds majority voted in favor of the motion, so I declare the motion passed. We are now going to move to Article 13, and the Selectmen are going to make, play musical chairs here. This is Disposition of Real Property, 348-364 Main Street. Ms. Green moves that the town authorize the transfer of the real property as set forth in the article from the Board of Selectmen for general municipal purposes to the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of conveyance, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of all or any portion of such real property for affordable housing purposes on such terms and conditions as the Selectmen may determine. Do I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Green, you may speak to your motion. I believe we agreed on 10 minutes.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and good evening, everybody. Article 13 requests town meeting's authorization for the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the property at 348-364 Main Street for the purpose of affordable housing. The area outlined in red in this photo is the property being discussed tonight. It is 4.75 acres on Main Street near Route 2. Today, the property consists of the Kennedy Landscaping and Garden Center and the empty lots next to it. At a special town meeting in August 2015, the town approved the acquisition of the parcel for $1.8 million. This acquisition put the property in the town's control and ended litigation with Walker Realty, which had proposed a 20,000-square-foot daycare center for the site. The town finalized the purchase of the property in early 2016, and the Board of Selectmen created the 348-364 Main Street Master Planning Committee in May of that year. The committee was charged with considering options for future use of the property and making written recommendations to the Selectmen. The charge called for a committee of 11 members comprised primarily of representatives from other boards and committees. I was the Board of Selectmen representative and the chair of the committee. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the other members of the committee: from the Finance Committee, Mike Majors; from the Economic Development Committee, Doug Tindell, who had to step down in 2017; from the Green Advisory Board, Cameron Cousins; from the Acton Housing Authority, Ryan Betaz; from Acton 2020, Patricia McKnight, who also stepped down in 2017; and then Ben Blumenthal; from the Historical Commission, Doug Herrick; and our three-at-large members, David Brown, Ann Chang, and Bill Mullen. I would also like to take, to thank the town's Land Use and Economic Development Director, Selby, who staffed the committee, providing an incredible amount of support and work over the past two and a half years. The committee began meeting in August 2016, and after discussing a number of ideas for the parcel, hired Dale Design to help conceptualize options for the site. In June 2017, the committee held a public forum to present five potential uses based on our discussions and work with Dale Design. The options were seven as-of-right single-family homes, multi-unit housing in open space, town homes in a marketplace, a boutique historic inn and gardens, and optimizing the existing use. At the end of the forum, members of the audience voted on their preferred options. The top three options were the historic inn and restaurant, optimizing the current use, and multi-unit housing. The committee then began conducting due diligence on these three options. The Acton Housing Authority conducted a feasibility study on providing affordable multi-unit housing on the site. Selby looked at options for cleaning up the site and optimizing its current use, and he also received a grant from Mass Development to work with Pinnacle Advisory Group to study the feasibility of the hotel and restaurant option. Pinnacle concluded that a 30-to-50-room hotel and restaurant in the site would be difficult and undesirable for developers, given construction costs, marginal revenue potential, and high operating costs. After determining the hotel/restaurant concept was unlikely to work in this parcel, the committee issued an RFI in October 2018 to gather proposals for using the site directly from developers and other interested groups. The committee received four responses to the RFI from the Acton Housing Authority, NOW Communities, Wynn Stanley Enterprises, and the Acton Dog Park Committee. This chart summarizes each of the responses. In short, the Acton Housing Authority proposed building a 31-unit affordable housing development for seniors and people with disabilities and purchasing the, the property from the town for $1 million. for one million dollars. NOW Communities proposed building sixteen cottage-style houses. Their proposed purchase price varied from four hundred thousand dollars if four of the units were restricted for affordable housing, to one point eight million dollars if all units were market rate. Wynn Stanley proposed a five hundred thousand dollar purchase price for the property to build twenty-two market-rate modular homes. And finally, the Acton Dog Park Committee proposed building a dog park on the property with no purchase price, although they provided options that could fit with other proposed uses of the property. The committee met in November 2018 and ranked the applications on six criteria. After this review, the committee voted to move forward with three options: the Acton Housing Authority proposal, the NOW Communities proposal, and the proposal to optimize the current land use. The committee held a public forum in January 2019 to present these options. The members in attendance overwhelmingly supported the Acton Housing Authority proposal. The committee met later that month and unanimously voted to recommend that the Board of Selectmen dispose of the property for the purposes outlined in the Acton Housing Authority proposal with a number of conditions. The committee presented this proposal to the Board of Selectmen in February 2019, and the Board unanimously endorsed the recommendation. Which brings us to tonight. The Board of Selectmen recommends disposing of this property for affordable housing. While the vote tonight is simply for disposition for affordable housing purposes, the Main Street Committee and Board of Selectmen have both voted to recommend disposing of the property for an affordable housing development owned and operated by the Acton Housing Authority. The AHA proposal is for thirty-one units designated for seniors or adults with disabilities. They are proposing twenty-seven one-bedroom units and four two-bedroom units. There are currently two hundred people on Acton Housing Authority's waitlist for this type of housing. The building would be three stories but designed in a way that appears two or two and a half stories from the street. It would also have elevator access and provide spaces for passive recreation, as well as shared facilities and services to support the residents. The Acton Housing Authority estimates about four years from approval of the disposition of the property to occupancy, although that timeframe is dependent on receiving state and federal financing. These next two slides are renderings of what the building and property could look like. The proposal is to design the building in a farmhouse style, with the building on the portion of the site currently occupied by Kennedy Landscaping, and open space on the other portion of the parcel. These are preliminary drawings and can change throughout the design process. The Acton Housing Authority's feasibility study for this proposal included a detailed financing proposal. The total development cost is estimated at fourteen point eight million dollars. This includes the proposed one million dollar purchase price for the land. The Acton Housing Authority anticipates receiving ten point six million dollars in federal and state low-income housing tax credits, two point two million dollars from affordable housing state grant programs, one and a half million dollars from a forty-year mortgage, and applying for a five hundred thousand dollar grant from the Community Preservation Committee for the local contribution that many of these state and federal programs require. The town purchases parcel using one point eight million dollars from free cash. The Acton Housing Authority's one million dollars will be returned to that same fund. The proposed five hundred thousand dollars from CPC comes from the Community Preservation Act Fund, which is derived from a separate tax in property taxes and which is set aside for specific uses, one of which is affordable housing. For their twelve-unit affordable housing development on Seacham Way, the Acton Housing Authority received over seven hundred thousand dollars in CPC funding over three CPC cycles for feasibility, design, and development costs. It's important to note that while it may seem like the AHA is really only paying the town five hundred thousand dollars for the property, the CPC and free cash are two separate funds, and the entire one million dollars will be used to replenish the town's free cash. The Acton Housing Authority also anticipates collecting four hundred nine thousand dollars in annual revenue from rent and spending three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars on maintenance and operating costs, leaving ninety-two thousand dollars for debt service, which is more than enough to cover the proposed mortgage. The Housing Authority has a proven track record of successfully building and operating affordable housing developments in town. This warrant article asks town meeting's permission to dispose of this property for affordable housing purposes. If approved, the Board of Selectmen proposes to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Acton Housing Authority to transfer the property. The MOA will include the agreement to purchase the property for one million dollars and conditions I mentioned earlier that the committee recommended to the Board of Selectmen. These included restricting the units to seniors and adults with disabilities, maintaining the Board of Selectmen's authority over the open-space parcel so that the town can have an open collaborative process to determine how to use that space in the future, requiring the AHA to consult with the town's design review board on the design of the building, requiring that the building be designed to echo Acton's colonial history, requiring pedestrian accessibility to and within the property, requiring the AHA to seek the highest level of preference for Acton residents for the units as allowed under federal and state regulations, and designing the building to lead gold standard and net-zero readiness to reduce the environmental impact of the building. The Acton Housing Authority has to... has agreed to these conditions and is committed to a collaborative relationship with the town to develop this property. While this is a proposed process, and some of the details may change during the MOA process, if this vote passes, the property will be disposed of for affordable housing purposes, and the town intends to follow this proper... process to enter into an agreement with the AHA. The town has undergone a comprehensive, multi-year process to determine the best use of this property. I want to once again thank the members of the 348-364 Main Street Master Planning Committee and Selby for all of their hard work. The Board of Selectmen believes that this proposal addresses a longstanding need for accessible, affordable housing for seniors and people with disabilities in our community, and presents an opportunity for the town to work closely with the Acton Housing Authority to develop a thoughtful, responsible, and attractive use for this property. We unanimously recommend Article thirteen and ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. The Finance Committee have a recommendation on this motion?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recognizes the significance of this strategically-located property. Early on, its potential as a gateway to Acton site was identified and debated. We appreciate the commitment of the Main Street Committee to identify an appropriate entity to develop this important yet controversial site to its highest and best use via the use of multiple public forums, design consultants, state grants, feasibility studies, and pure brainstorming. Based on the unique configuration of this site, the road forward has not been an easy one. Despite their best efforts, interest from potential developers was limited. Nevertheless, the Main Street Committee was diligent in coming up with a development plan that they felt would be in the best interest of the town of Acton. The Finance Committee acknowledges the need for senior housing and special young adults who have aged out of their traditional support systems. However, the financial impact of this plan cannot be ignored. The return of only five hundred thousand dollars after an investment of one point eight million dollars was a serious concern. The loss of potential real estate rev... tax revenue in perpetuity also causes this to be an expensive senior housing site. This is an economic model we wish to avoid in the future. More to the point, by a thoroughly divided vote, the Finance Committee voted to recommend this article. I close with the words of the contemporary English poet, Sir Michael Philip Jaeger: "You can't always get what you want, but if you try sometimes, you just may find you get what you need." We need senior housing.
Thank you, Mr. Majors. I will now open it up to town meeting members for debate and questions. Excuse me. You need to wait until I recognize you. But, no, 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 you may stay right where you are, and I will recognize the speaker at microphone number three, which is you, so you may go ahead and speak. Please identify yourself and your address first.
I'm Katie, twenty-eight Captain Brown's Lane, Acton, Mass. Good evening. I'm here today to represent the disabled community. This house will be wonderful, because it will be about five minutes away from my parents' house. Also, it will be wonderful, because I have friends, activities, and everything else that I don't want to leave this wonderful, safe community. Also, please consider voting yes for me and other individuals like me. If this was you, would you like this? Thank you.
Thank you. Recognize the speaker at microphone number two.
Hi, Miles Fidelman, five thirty-one Old Stone Brook. I'm new to the area, and I don't have an opinion on this, so this is more of a question. I was looking at the map and the location of the parcel adjacent to Route Two and the other buildings around it, and I was surprised that nobody said they studied it for an office building, which would seem the obvious kind of use of that parcel. And so, I'm curious as to, was it looked at, or wasn't it? Why?
Ms. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So, the parcel itself is actually zoned residential, and there used to be two houses on the part that's empty right now. Part of the point of putting out the RFI was to get a sense of what the development community wanted to develop there, because, again, when we had gone down the path of looking at the hotel and restaurant that the community supported, we then found that no developers wanted to actually do that, and they didn't think it was feasible. So, when we put out that RFI, that was certainly an option that we were looking for, but we did not receive any commercial or office building responses like that.
Thank you. Recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Good evening. My name is Mike Gowing, and I'm from ninety-three Harris Street. Actually, I have a question. The thirty-one units that they're talking about, what's the impact on our low-income percentage in terms of controlling forty B?
Ms. Green?
Sure, so all thirty-one units would count towards our low-income of deed-restricted affordable housing in terms of forty B. The exact impact that that has is hard to describe without sort of putting it in the context of all the other developments going on. There's some proposals right now that could potentially put the town into what's called safe harbor for a year or two years anyways, and then, when the census happens in 2020, that will change our number target for ten percent affordable. So, I can't say exactly what the impact will be, but I can't say all thirty-one units would be counted as affordable in terms of forty B.
I'm in support of this, by the way.
Thank you.
Recognize the speaker at microphone number three.
Charles Kudlik, Paul River Road. I have a question. Could you put up the slide that says financing? That one. Could somebody explain what ten point six million dollars in federal and state tax credit, how does that work?
Ms. Green?
Can I ask... You're pointing to Bob? Okay. Can I ask if the gentleman behind you actually responds to that, as he has a better understanding of what these tax credits, how they work?
And I promise you won't lose your turn in line.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Van Meter.
Bob Van Meter, two Half Moon Hill. The primary... one of the primary tools for financing affordable housing is the federal low-income housing tax credit. The state allocates federal low-income housing tax credits, and then developers sell those credits to investors. The state also has a state low-income housing tax credit that's usually awarded along with the federal credit, and so that is a normal way that affordable housing is financed and has been for about the past thirty years.
Just so, if I may, if I understand this correctly, who gets the tax credits?
Banks and other corporations that buy the credits get the credits.
And they supply the ten million dollars?
Yes, yes. Sorry.
For those of you who didn't hear, they supply... the banks supply the ten million dollars, correct? I'm not sure everyone heard that, so I just want to make sure town meeting members heard that. Thank you. I recognize the speaker at microphone number two.
Yeah, Martin Gretz, Sto Street. This strikes me as something that is a result of what happens when you go off half-cocked to start with. We bought this property for an inflated price with no idea of what to do with it, only an idea of what we didn't want to have done with it, and the main objection to that was that it would generate too much traffic. But, looking at all these proposals, all I can think of is, duh. And my real objection really is that there's nothing in this that says anything about the current occupants of the property, a business that I think is an asset to the community, Kennedy Landscaping. Is there any provision made for them for relocation or for remaining on the site?
Ms. Green?
Thank you. So, the town currently has a month-to-month lease with Kennedy Landscaping, and we... they are there sort of at our will, and we will work with them throughout the process, but our understanding is that I think they will be okay vacating the property. But, it is something that we will have to work out with them throughout it, but, again, in the town owning it, we do control the use of the property.
Well, I'd still hate to see them go out of business.
Recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Hi, I'm Nancy Tavernier, Mohawk Drive. I'm also the chairman of the Acton Community Housing Corporation, and I'm speaking for them. The ACHC has voted to support this article in the hope that the Acton Housing Authority's proposal will come to fruition. As Katie alluded to, all of the units will be counted toward our ten percent. We're currently at six point seven percent. If just taken at face value, it would move us up closer to seven percent. In this case, the reason the units count are not only because they're rentals, but all of them are affordable rentals for incomes of thirty to sixty percent of the area median income. Given the long list of seniors that are waiting for housing, local seniors especially, that the Housing Authority holds, there is no question about the need for these rental units. Acton has seen significant population growth since 2000. Our population is aging. Most of our housing is single-family units. The cost of housing is prohibitive for many. We need to provide suitable housing for seniors on fixed income. Using town-owned land for such an important and needed public purpose meets the goals of both the Acton 2020 Master Plan and the Housing Production Plan. ACHC is prepared to help provide a local share to the Acton Housing Authority and looks forward to a continued good relationship with them.
Thank you. I recognize the speaker at microphone three.
Bob Van Meter, two Half Moon Hill. I'm speaking as the representative of a newly-formed housing advocacy coalition here in Acton, Housing for All. We believe that Acton can and should be an inclusive community with housing options to meet the needs of people of different incomes, abilities, household types, and stages of life. This project clearly is a step in that direction, and we strongly support it and urge the town meeting to approve this article. Thank you.
I recognize the speaker at microphone two.
Adam Parker, nineteen, Half Moon Hill. I just wanted to say I heartily endorse the motion, urge the body to support it. Having raised at the January meeting the question of the extent to which the building of this property would contribute to reducing greenhouse gas emissions, I'm very pleased to note that the planners have now designated presumably some resources to make the product... the project net zero, meaning net zero carbon and energy, ready. We need to do that in all of our new buildings in Acton, or even go further and make them net zero in order to mitigate climate change, and we need, over time, to convert our other buildings, including our homes, away from burning fossil fuels, including natural gas. My question is, what specifically is meant in the plan by net zero ready? Thank you.
Ms. Green?
Thank you. So, that was a condition that the Main Street Master Planning Committee recommended, including in our agreement, in that, again, one of the members of our committee was Cameron Cousins from the Green Advisory Board, so she had advocated for that, and the committee supported including that. We also put designing towards LEED standards, because that approval process, sometimes if there's one tiny thing, you know, wrong, you don't actually get the certification, but the intention is to design to that as well, and the AHA has successfully done that in the past. So, I think the exact details of what will kind of be required or recommended under net-zero readiness would be further defined in this MOA process. net zero readiness would be further defined in this MOA process with the AHA and through the development and design process. So we didn't have anything particularly specific in mind, but again, wanted them to be prepared and to reduce the environmental impact of the building as much as possible.
Recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Yeah, Franny Osman, 16 Half Moon Hill. The Commission on Disabilities voted unanimously to support this article. We see it as a need in town, based on some of the statistics that were cited before about the long waiting lists, including 95 Acton senior households currently being on the Acton Housing Authority waiting list. I've visited the South Street housing in Carlisle. I recommend a visit there. It's beautiful. And this hopefully will be designed somewhat like that, with a lot of community amenities along with the housing. I wanted to note to the person who was worried about parking that there's less of a parking need, as seen at Windsor Green. I also wanted to quote somebody on the Commission on Disabilities, who noted that we are the group, the people with disabilities are the group in which everyone eventually becomes a member, should they be so fortunate. Fortunate because the other option is death. If it's not you or your parents right now, it will be someday. And then there are the children, children whose medical needs are complicated, so they need trained professional skills to help them. I won't get into the needs of people with disabilities, but I just want to say that if it's not built here, it will be somewhere else in town, and we own this land now. And quoting Charlotte Sagoff, who was a role model of mine, who lived a few doors from this property, do the right thing.
Recognize the speaker at microphone three.
Right here?
Yes.
I might, I may make this a question and answer.
Excuse me, can you identify yourself?
I will, yeah. I may make this a question and answer episode. My name is Peter Farmer. I live at 28 Captain Brown's Lane. I happen to be related to Katie. We just brought up that this could be a great location. People, young people like to walk to the library, and they could. Young people and old people like me love Starbucks coffee. This is a great location and a great use for people that want to stay here and live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognize the speaker at microphone number four.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the previous question.
Second.
Motion to cut off debate has been made and seconded. I will call for the vote. That requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. We will vote. This also requires a two-thirds vote, and I think this one we will do by clicker. So I would ask that people turn on their clickers. This way, at least, we'll make sure they're working. Again, gently press the orange button, please. And we've got the timer sent to 20, set to 20 seconds. Is everybody ready to vote? I will declare the voting window open. Vote a for yes, e for no. I declare the voting window closed. We will see the result here shortly. Oh, you have a problem?
Some of the people did not get to vote.
I'm sorry, could you speak a little?
Some of the people did not get to vote. It was reopened for 10 seconds. There were some.
Can we do that or not?
Yeah, do it again.
Okay. I would suggest everyone turn their clickers off and then on again, probably to make sure that that works. Can we, someone's clicker's not working? You didn't know you were going to get to vote twice this way? Okay. We are not ready to vote yet, so please wait. This Cadillac has got another clicker for the voter here. Thank you. We are set. Everyone has their clickers on. I declare the voting window is now closed. While we're waiting for the tally of the votes, some of you who may be paying attention have noticed perhaps that this clock, at least down here, keeps flickering, but I've been checking the time, and the time is still working properly, so. You may have seen me with my cellphone. I was timing the timer. We will now move to Article 14, and this is a very lengthy motion. You only see part of it up there right now. Mr. Benson moves that the town, one, authorize the board of selectmen to acquire by purchase/gift eminent domain or otherwise the real property as set forth in the article on such terms and conditions as the selectmen may determine. Two, appropriate $1,100,000 to be expended by the town manager to fund said acquisition. And to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the board of selectmen, is authorized to borrow $1,100,000 under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 44, Section 7, as amended. And further, that any premium received upon the sale of the bonds, lest the cost of preparing, issuing, and marketing them, and any accrued interest received upon the delivery of the bonds, may be applied to the costs of the project and to reduce the amount authorized to be borrowed for the project by like amount. Three, appropriate and transfer $33,000 from the commuter lot parking fees fund to fund the first year of debt service on such borrowing. And four, authorize the board of selectmen to dispose of a portion of the real property as set forth in the article by leaseback to the current owner on such terms and conditions as the selectmen may determine. May I have a second? Mr. Benson, I hope your presentation is shorter than the motion. You may speak to your motion.
Good evening. The town has been seeking to purchase the 19 and 21 Maple Street parcel since 2014. Last Thursday, a purchase and sale agreement was signed that is subject to town meeting's approval this evening. The selectmen wish to thank town manager John Mancherati for his sticktuitiveness and patient efforts in reaching this agreement. The Maple Street parcel immediately abuts the South Acton train station. The property owner and longtime Acton resident, Gordon Richards, for many years operated a very successful foundation contracting business on the site. Several years ago, Mr. Richards closed the business and converted part of the property to a 40-space commuter parking lot. Commuters rent reserved parking spaces by the month for $100. In addition to Mr. Richards' 40 parking spaces, there are six other commuter lots. Four are owned by the town, and two owned by the MBTA and leased to us for nominal rents. And that, those six lots total another 430 spaces. Now, assured daily parking is a priority for getting commuters off Route 2 and onto the commuter rail to their jobs in Cambridge and Boston, and it also contributes to our local sustainability efforts. Although it is for later discussion, there is the potential for adding as many as 38 additional parking spaces with the removal of the building, let me just catch up here, the building and garage presently on the property. The agreed purchase price is $1.1 million. The $1.1 million will likely be bonded over 20 years at an annual cost of $80,000. Payments on the bond would be made from the commuter lot and station maintenance fund. But the budgeted revenue for the fund for FY '20 is projected at $260,000, and that's not including an additional $42,000 in parking revenues from the 19, 19 to 21 Maple Street lot, should Article 14 be approved this evening. Mr. Richards will get a leaseback on his building and garage for one year through June 30, 2020, for $1. Note that the parking lot revenues are derived from sticker fees in the main parking lot and the two School Street lots. Meters in the main parking lot and monthly reserved space parking at Jones Field and the lot at the corner of Maple and Main Street. That's just further up. So 19, 19 to 21 Maple Street is a good-sense acquisition, so please support Article 14.
Thank you. Recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. These parcels are located right next to the South Acton commuter rail station, and currently, there are 40 parking spaces on this site being used for commuter parking. As you heard, the town has signed a purchase and sale agreement to buy the land. Over half of the cash flow cost of this purchase will be paid for by the annual rental income from these spaces. The remainder of the cost will be funded by the annual excess revenue over expenses derived from the commuter parking lot fund. This fund, whose balance comes not from general taxes, but from fees paid by people that use all the town rail station parking lots. Although, as in most purchases of land, the Finance Committee wished that the purchase price was lower. There is enough money, however, in the accumulated excess and annual excess of the commuter parking lot fund to support this purchase price, even with very conservative estimates being used. These spaces are needed as part of the town's goal to encourage public transportation. That said, this land is already being used for parking, so to maximize the benefit of that land, the Finance Committee wishes to encourage the selectmen to expand the number of spaces being offered on this site as soon as possible. And since these spaces are so close to the boarding platform, we also want to encourage the selectmen to consider charging a premium price for these rentals, so that they, so that they more quickly pay off the bond that you heard earlier. The Finance Committee recommends this article.
Thank you. Open it up to town meeting members for debate. Recognize the speaker at microphone number three.
Hi, my name is Maria Pickett. I'm at 5 Joseph Reed Lane. I agree that we need more parking, so my question was if we were going to raise the price of the parking in that area?
Are we going to?
Yes.
You may respond.
I think right now, in our, the Jones Field lot and the lot further down Maple Street, or Maple and Main, we charge $100 a month. I think if you're talking about increasing it, it may be another $25 a month, so it's not going to be, I don't see it going up to $200.
Okay.
Recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Hi, Franny Osman, 6 Half Moon Hill. I am very much in favor of this. I am not necessarily in favor of filling it only with parking. The reason I think it's very important to buy this is because the entrance right now to the train station from the south side is far from where many of the trains require you to board, so there's a long walk, which by designing the station the way we did, we tried to avoid for people. But if they are dropped off on the south side right now, they still have a long walk down the platform. I think getting this property will allow us to have an entrance right where the trains open their doors. But I really want to encourage us to help people not bring their metal boxes, called cars, to the station, but to provide transportation for them from the other side of town by expanding the rail shuttle program, and for adding bathrooms, perhaps coffee, but a bathroom at the station would really make it more comfortable for many people and more able to use public transportation, if they knew they had a place they could go if they have to. Thank you.
Recognize the speaker at microphone number two.
Hi, Phoebe Conant, Nagog Hill Road. Mine is actually a question. Will you be providing additional covered biking, bike parking? We've just opened a huge rail trail right there, and I think trying to encourage more people to access the station by bike would be good, but I know sometimes it's very hard, especially in inclement weather, to have a place to leave the bikes, so I don't know if, in the process of developing this, we can include more bike parking.
Mr. Benson?
Yeah, we would be, we would certainly be open to that addition as well.
Okay.
I mean, that gets people, you know, off the cars and on their bikes and to the station in a friendly way.
Thank you.
Recognize the speaker at microphone three.
Hi, Nancy Decker. I live at 186 School Street. I had a question surrounding why this was looked at as monthly rental spaces as opposed to more general commuter parking.
Well, probably two reasons. You know, one, we have to purchase the parcel, and the funds need to come from somewhere. Two, the neighbor, the Maple Street neighborhood, you always, it's always balancing interests in these decisions. We need commuter parking, and we also have to satisfy the needs of the concerns of the neighborhood. They don't want a lot of traffic coming down there, just circling the neighborhood, looking for sticker parking spaces. We're very mindful of that, and that was a reason why the lot at the corner of Maple and Main was made into a lot. That was a trade-off to the neighborhood.
Follow-up on that?
Sure.
Would it be a possibility to move some of the rental spaces in the South Acton lot on the other side into that, therefore removing that concern about it being a residential neighborhood while still opening up some sticker spaces?
Move some of the rental spaces where?
My understanding is that there were rental spaces in the other commuter lot on the other side of the tracks. I'm sorry, I don't know that street.
There's a lot on railways. I think that's what you might be referring to. That is an MBTA lot. They charge us $1 a year, and the condition of that is that's free parking.
Okay. Thank you.
Recognize the speaker at microphone one.
Hi, Tom Campbell, 5 Duggan Road. Former member of the Acton, South Acton Train Station Advisory Committee, and I just want to say that I'm a huge fan of this. We've been talking with Gordon Richards now for, I don't know, long, you said 2014, but longer than that. The opportunity to put parking in this spot actually does more than just add parking. It creates a safety, a nice turnaround for people coming down Stowe Street. They're hitting. They're hitting a one-way road on Maple or going down through Maple, so it abates some of the traffic going down Maple Street. And also, you said it could fit 78 spots. It makes money, right? Because you're saying $93,600 a year in rental income versus $88,000 in interest, so right there you're making money. I think the other thing is that the station was actually designed for an entrance into that parking lot, like, literally, we've been talking about this forever. So I think it's, I'm a huge fan. I want to appreciate the work that you guys have done to formalize this, and thank you very much.
See one more speaker standing at microphone one.
Yeah, Martin Gretz again. This is perfectly good proposal, but once again, there's no mention of the current users of the property, which is Emerson Hospital's Emergency Response Vehicle. Is there any provision being made for them to remain there or to move someplace else?
Yes. For the next year, part of the lease agreement with Mr. Richards is that ambulance vehicle may stay in his garage. He receives about $1,000, it's $1,000 a month in rent from the ambulance company.
Yeah, and after that?
That's over then at that point unless the town wants to, you know, we want to continue that arrangement.
Okay. More bike spaces would help, too.
Okay.
I see, no. Thought we had one more speaker, but I guess not. So I think we are ready to vote, and I will call for the vote. This requires a two-thirds majority, but given how well we did with clickers before, I think this time I'll try voice again. So all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed, say nay. I declare that the motion carries by the required two-thirds majority. We will now move to Article 15, 257 Central Street, Northern Subdivided Parcel. Ms. Annette Lockery moves that the town take no action. Is Ms. Lockery here? Yes, I recognize you at microphone number four.
Thanks very much. I live at 57 Windsor Avenue. In light of the change in the landowner's support for this article between the time it was posted and the present, I move that no action be taken at this time.
Thank you. The Board of Selectmen have a recommendation to this motion?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The town did receive notice from the property owner that they were not interested in selling this parcel to the town, and so the town, the Board of Selectmen heartily agrees and recommends taking no action on this article.
And the Finance Committee?
Mr. Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends that we take no action.
Thank you. Town meeting members, anyone wish to comment? See no one rising, we will vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. The motion carries. I heard the nay. There weren't very many. We move to Article 16. Mr. Berry moves that the town appropriate and transfer $50,000 from the fiscal year 2000. No, this is not the same motion. Let's try this one. Mr. Berry moves that the town authorize the first-year cost items contained in the collective bargaining agreements between the town and the A, Acton Police Patrol Officers' Association, B, Acton Police Superior Officers, Perren Massachusetts Coalition of Police Local 380, closed Perren, C, Public Safety Dispatchers, International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local 25, D, Highway Municipal Properties and Cemetery, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees Local 1703. May I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Mr. Berry, you may speak to your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The state labor laws require the town meeting approve the first-year funding for collective bargaining agreements. The town manager has been very successful in negotiating new agreements with the four of the town's labor unions. This funding is contained in the budget that town meeting approved last night, but because of the requirements of state labor law, in order to access that funding, town meeting has to approve the first-year funding to pay for these agreements. Once the town meeting approves the first year, automatically the second and third years are appropriated. So the patrol officers' contract is a three-year contract from fiscal year 20 through fiscal year 22. There's 34 employees, police officers, a 2% increase. Total cost, $40,837 for the first year. The superior police officers, the sergeants and lieutenants, is also a three-year agreement. There are eight employees in those categories. That's a 2% increase for the first year, and that cost is $12,836. Public Safety Dispatchers, their contract expired at the beginning of this fiscal year, last July, so it's retroactive to July, is that July 18, I guess, fiscal year 19? Right. So that's a three-year agreement from fiscal year 19 to 21. There's 12 dispatchers, that's a 2% increase in the first year, $9,425. Highway Municipal Properties and Cemetery, similar to the Dispatchers, contract expired last year, so it's retroactive to July 19, or July 18, I'm sorry. 29 employees in the Highway Department and Cemeteries and Municipal Properties, a 2% increase the first year, costs $31,453. The, over the life of these contracts, the increases are 2% in the first year, 2% in the second year, and 2% in the third year with the police patrol superiors and dispatch employees. For the Highway Department, it was 2%, 2%, and 2.25%. Those increases are certainly consistent with the current cost of living increases and other comparable communities that are negotiating contracts. Again, this money is already in the operating budget, which the town meeting approved last night. There's language in these contracts to improve the town's administrative payroll processes and other improvements in town operations. So the selectmen voted unanimously recommend to town meeting that we approve these agreements.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. The Finance Committee recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Last night, both the Chair of the Board of Selectmen and the Chair of the Finance Committee mentioned that compensation costs are 73% of our total budget. We are a people business. They also mentioned that property tax levy is about 80, 85% of our revenue. Now, it grows by 2.5% under Proposition 2.5. The Finance Committee has long held a position that compensation costs have to increase at around 2.5% to keep us healthy in the long term. So these contracts deliver on that. Finance Committee recommends this article.
Thank you. I will open it up to town meeting members for debate and questions. See no one standing, so we will go ahead and vote. This requires a simple majority. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We will now move to Article 17, which initiates the financial consent agenda. This is a little bit of complicated doings here, so I'm going to let our Assistant, soon-to-be Permanent Moderator, handle the financial consent, as I know that at least one of these is going to be polled, so. Madam Moderator, it's all yours.
Thank you. Broke one of the clickers. First of all, I would just like to mention, in case anyone was wondering, Mr. Peter Berry and I are not at all related. Maybe somewhere back along the line, but not any current relationship. So for the consent calendar, how we will operate this, I will call out each Article 17 through 24. If there are at least two voters who wish to discuss any of the individual items, just call out "hold," and we'll take that, hold that aside. Any that are left remaining, we will just vote as a group without discussion. The selectmen put these on the consent agenda as their standard articles that take care of the regular business, but if there is a need for discussion or questions, we can go ahead and do that. So Ms. Green moves that the town take up the eight articles on the consent calendar on pages 54 through 60 of the warrant. Articles 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24. Article 17, demand fees for late payments. Article 18, commuter lot and station maintenance. Article 19, septic disposal enterprise budget. Article 20, transfer station and recycling enterprise budget. Article 21, sewer enterprise budget. That item will be held. Article 22, ambulance enterprise budget. Article 23, transportation enterprise budget. Article 24, revolving fund budget. Article 21 is the only one that was held out. We will now vote for all the other articles in this section. It requires a majority to pass. All those in favor of Articles 17 through 20 and 22 through 24, please say aye. All who are opposed, please say nay. The motions all carry. Now we will turn to Article 21, and I believe Ms. Adachi has the presentation on that. If we could have Article 21 on the screen, please? Ms. Adachi moves the town, do we have the, oh, there we go. Ms. Adachi moves the town raise $1,788,330 from department receipts, transfer $341,840 from retained earnings, and appropriate $2,130,170 for the purpose of operating the sewer system. Ms. Adachi, to your motion.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Before my timed starts clicking off, I'd just like to briefly introduce the Sewer Action Advisory Committee, which has been working on-
Pause, please. Is there a second to the motion? Thank you.
Okay, I'll sort of, thank you, Madam Moderator, and good evening, everyone. Before my timed presentation starts, I'd like to just mention the advisory committee that has been working on evaluating West Acton searing. Well, first, I'm representing the Board of Selectmen. I'm also the chairman under the charge for the committee. Joanne Becetta is on, from the Board of Health, also West Acton resident. John Capata represents the planning board. Ann Chang, Economic Development Committee, and also a past Sewer Action Committee member. J.D. Head represents the AB School District. He's actually the Director of School Operations and not the Facilities Manager. Pete Henry is the co-owner of True West, also a Gates and AB High School alumnus. He's a resident of Boxborough. He represents the Business District. Gary McCarthy is a civil engineer. Sam Rice, also a civil engineer and past Sewer Action Committee. Dave Wellinghoff up on stage represents the Finance Committee. And Paul Campbell, town engineer, is the staff support who has kept us going for a number of months. And with that, I'm done with my introduction. But the committee was formed by the Board of Selectmen in 2017 to evaluate the feasibility of searing. And let me get my clicker, this requires a lot of coordination. So Article 21 is pretty opaque, but essentially it provides for a budget for operating the sewer system of just over $2 million of that. The bulk of the funding is coming from the users in the sewer district, and the balance is coming from reserves from the enterprise fund, of which $225,000 is proposed for a preliminary design and feasibility study for searing in West Acton, and the balance of the reserves are proposed for capital improvements. Why now? First of all, for three years, goal-setting years for the Board of Selectmen, it's always in the spring after town meeting. The proposed searing of West Acton made the short-term goal list three years in succession. Sewering or studying searing in West Acton is also consistent with the Acton 2020 Master Plan and the 2006 Comprehensive Water Resource Management Plan, which is the basis for a lot of the identification of locations in Acton that might be dicey for septic systems and might be candidates for alternatives to septic systems, including possibly searing. This continues the feasibility work that was begun in 2016, annual town meeting with an appropriation for West Acton sewers. It will collect data that will allow the town to sort of get more precise determinations of where the potential searing area might be and also the cost calculations. And the availability of searing obviously would be an option for the school district, possibly with regard to the new school site at the, at Gates School. And finally, if we expanded the number of users in the system, that could offer some stabilization and assistance to the existing sewers, sewer users in the existing sewer district. Next steps, assuming if the town meeting approves this proposal, which again is for preliminary study and feasibility evaluation, there would still be, have to be another town meeting vote for construction, well, detailed engineering and construction, and that would be preceded by a lot of public outreach, including a lot of public information meetings and also meetings with the Business District Representatives. Article 21, the entire article, not just the proposed study funding for West Acton, is endorsed by the Board of Selectmen, who are also the sewer commissioners, although we don't do very much sewer commission work. The Board of Health, the Economic Development Committee, and the Finance Committee. No, I just need the motion slide.
Thank you. I'll now ask town meeting members for comments and questions. At microphone three.
I have an amendment, I'm moving-
Do we have your-
Yes, we should have that.
So, could we have the amendment? Ms. Friedrichs moves to amend to add the following language to the main motion, provided, however, that such appropriation shall not be expended for the purpose of West Acton sewer expansion. Do I hear a second? It has been moved and seconded. I believe you have four minutes to your amendment.
And I have some presentation slides.
What's that? No, there's- You have, you have the-
Oh, I have to do it?
Yeah, the black one right there.
Okay. So I don't think this sewer study is needed. I feel like taking $200 per South Acton user, sewer, existing sewer user, I think that we should have it as a separate article in the town budget if we really want to do this. The proponents keep claiming that there's some kind of mandate to sewer West Acton. They keep citing these non-binding documents, including the Comprehensive Water Resources Management Plan, the CWRMP. But when they came to us with the CWRMP, they guaranteed to us that this would not be any mandate for the future, that this is a report that we had to submit to the state, but that nothing in it would be a future mandate. So I want people to understand that. The engineers have told us already that the scattered failed systems are the same rate as anywhere else in town, that it's not- that it's not, there's not an environmental need for this. And so, I feel like, you know, I'm starting to question, why are we even doing this? And I'll tell you why. I feel like the developers want it. They want to make money, and they want you to pay for the infrastructure to do it. So, I feel like if they want a sewer extension, they should pay for it. I did an investigation into whether a localized septic treatment plant for the downtown businesses would be more affordable, and it probably would be a fraction of the cost, maybe even like a half a million dollars, whereas they're talking over ten million, maybe fourteen million dollars for the sewer system that would then be paid for by residents. So, the master plan actually called for us to look at both. But the consultant that did the study to decide whether to recommend sewers or a localized treatment plant was the same consultant that'll bid on the sewer. So, you could figure that the recommendation would probably be a sewer. So anyways, these folks that wanted the sewers, they want basically staff time and money to do this. And I feel like we've got to start saying no to some of this stuff and have it stand on its own. You'll notice that in the committee, there were a lot of developers and would-be developers, and I urge you to say no. If the sewer, existing sewer users want to pay for this, well, so be it. I feel like they have the right to say yes for sure. But the guarantees that you'll pay less over time if you do more sewer expansion haven't panned out so far. So, the promises of this expanded network will be cheaper for you. We've had a lot of people add, go onto the sewer system, and the rates haven't decreased yet. To the claim that sewers do not increase development, let's look at the facts. South Acton has over fifty new housing units that would not have been allowed. You can drive past 184 Main across from the Discovery Museum. And these aren't going to be very affordable units, even though it's under 40B. You know, very large units with gas, fireplaces, and fancy everything else. But nonetheless, eight units on that little property, it would only be probably two or even one if it was a market rate. And if there were no sewers and it was a 40B, there'd only be four, and they'd probably be much smaller and more affordable. Anyways, to the claim that people have been writing in support of the West Acton sewer project, I did a quick search of the people who were writing in, and it seems that every person either has business with the town, either a developer, a tenant of a developer, one person is writing in support. That person wants to relieve over a hundred thousand dollars in back taxes. So, I feel like we should say no to this and let them come back with a, a proposal where it's the town money or actually for the users to pay for it themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. I realize I-
Oh, one more thing. I still have eighteen seconds. Just, I wanted to say one thing, and it'll just be less, I'll be ten seconds. That I was doing some calculations, and the fourth sites would own like a hundred thousand dollars. The people who own New London Pizza would own like a hundred thousand dollars. Even some other places would be a lot more. So, I feel like it's not well thought out, and we should send them back to the drawing board. Thank you.
Thank you. I realize I neglected to ask the Finance Committee for their recommendation on the original article.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The Finance Committee supports this article. Recommends this article.
Sorry, sorry for the, taking things out of order. We are now only on the amendment.
Madam Moderator.
Yes.
I asked the moderator if I could have some time to respond to the proposed amendment-
Yes.
On behalf of the Board of Selectmen.
That is-
And I have two minutes, so I'm really going to confine my comments to a number of allegations in, in the slide presentation, because there were a lot of other assertions here that I don't agree with, but I don't have time to respond.
Two minutes. Thank you.
Okay, so, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to not support this proposed amendment. The idea of seoring in West Acton is not an idle notion cooked up by people enthralled to West Acton business interests and indifferent to environmental protection. To the contrary, the town's 2006 Comprehensive Water Resource Management Plan identified West Acton as an area where alternatives to standard septic systems were advisable, and seoring was a recommended option. Numerous business owners do support seoring in West Acton due to the public health-related constraints that septic systems can create for business operations, especially restaurants. But business interests are not the only reason for further consideration of sewers in West Acton. There are residential properties that could benefit from seoring, and there are residents concerned about aging septic systems or who already have gone through multiple septic replacements who would welcome a sewer option. It's not clear what the source is for the assertion that almost everyone in West Acton has a functioning septic system, whether via replacement or otherwise. And as for the environmental protection concern, the Mass Department of Environmental Protection regulations require that a property with a failed septic system connect to sewer if available, which presumably wouldn't be the case if seoring were an environmental risk. The proposed article twenty-one funding won't enable construction of sewers in West Acton. Construction will require another town meeting vote. The additional data that funding of article twenty-one would provide would enable fine-tuning of the rough cost estimates in the informational handouts comparing sewer and septic replacement costs that the town engineer prepared as part of the public outreach regarding article twenty-one. Finally, please note that article twenty-one also proposes the use of a hundred seventeen thousand dollars in reserves for capital improvements to cover costs that current users otherwise would have to pay. And new users in West Acton eventually would replenish the two hundred twenty-five thousand dollar funding for the article twenty-one study. Again, the Board of Selectmen does not recommend the proposed amendment of article twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you. Town meeting members, to the amendment only. Oh, fincome on the amendment. I'm sorry. Yes.
The Finance Committee does not recommend the amendment.
Now, town meeting members, on the amendment only. Microphone two, please.
Hi, Mark Mattson, McLeod Lane in West Acton. I'm very concerned about the amount of growth that this town has seen. And I've noticed in particular that where we put sewers, we tend to attract a lot of development, be it 40B or any other type, where we end up putting in more housing than we would be otherwise. And I've found that this has caused problems for the town resources, the schools, the traffic, and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone one.
A question first. When they did the South Acton sewer system, who paid for the design fees? Didn't it come out of the general fund?
Ms. Adachi.
Did you happen to know, Jack? I'm, I'm going to have to ask if we, we have a consultant with Woodard and Curran who's here. He's a project manager, and I assume you're not a resident of Acton. So, if you have the answer and we want you to speak, then town meeting would have to authorize him to do so.
Thank you. Would all, all members wishing to hear from the consultant regarding this project, please say aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Thank you. Go ahead.
I can actually answer that one. So, the original sewer project, it was partially funded by a gift account from a development on High Street there. And then, it was also partially funded by estimated betterments. People that were in the sewer area were paying an estimate of their betterment as the project was going along. But fortunately now, twenty years later, we have a very healthy sewer enterprise, so we don't see the need for estimated betterments with this project. And with a healthy reserve balance, we'll be able to borrow from ourselves at no interest and pay it back for the future users.
So, if I'm, I'm a resident of South Acton, I pay five hundred and thirty-five dollars a year for twenty-three and a half years into the betterment fund, are you now taking my money that I paid in and paying for the design fees for West Acton sewers? That's my question.
Yes, who may respond?
No, we're not. So, your fees, your betterment goes to pay for the original sewer construction. Your monthly fees go to pay the operation of the sewer enterprise. What this is, is retained earnings. So, this is money that's left over from operating years, from previous years. And it's also from privileged fees for people that exceed their assessment. When they're assessed a privilege fee to exceed something that normally wouldn't have been able to have been built without the use of a sewer, those fees have been gone to reserves, and this is where we're using money to study further expansion.
Thank you. I think that takes care of the question. Did that answer your question?
Not really. I mean, why isn't the money being returned to the South Acton residents we're paying in if you're, if you have excess money being generated?
I think that's a broader question than-
Well, a lot of you are using it for West Acton sewers.
You are getting, part, the hundred and seventeen K is getting used for capital improvements that would normally have been, have, have been coming out of the user fee. So, you, you are getting a benefit from retained earnings. That's why your fees are lower, because that hundred and seventeen K is coming out of retained earnings.
I'm in favor of the amendment, and sewers have unintended consequences. And unless you're going to show us the build-out in West Acton that would happen under a sewer system, I'm voting no. Thank you.
Microphone four. You're good to go now.
Is it on? Okay. I'm Nancy Waters. I live on Massachusetts Avenue in West Acton. I have two questions, but they're quick. The first one is, my understanding is that for residential customers, signing up for the sewage system is optional. Is that correct?
Yes, go ahead.
Madam Moderator, if you have a functioning septic system, you aren't required to connect. You will be obligated for the betterment, because with the sewer line going by your property, it's, you're technically, you have an improvement in the value of your property, so. But the betterment charge can be spread out over thirty years.
Okay, that ties to my second question. Have there, have you done any analysis of what the impact is on home values?
I, sorry, Madam Moderator. No, I actually asked the town assessor that question one time, and he honestly wasn't able to confirm with his sampling that there was an obvious pattern. This is a sort of a common standard that the property is, is improved in some way. It's more valuable, because there are a lot of people who don't want septic systems. It's convenient to have seoring, so.
But they haven't quantified that?
Not, sorry.
Go ahead.
This is sort of run-on question and answer. But not, not our town assessor. That is something that I actually would like to have more concrete information about.
I, I'd like to know if there's any realtors here at town meeting.
That's not, that's not in order. This isn't like a group discussion.
No, 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 no. I just was encouraging them to come to the microphone.
They may.
Okay. Thank you.
Microphone two, please.
Leo Fatchman, Wright Terrace, Acton. I think we should keep the conversation to the amendment, because the whole thing here is, you know, this is looking for information to answer all these questions. Right now, they have a general map, which I believe I've seen during the different commission, and that can be expanded, contracted. But again, it's for a study. Let's find out, you know, something to answer all your questions. You know, Paul, during these meetings, he was very good about discussing what they had and what we still had to figure out. So, if we can, let's keep the conversation right now on the amendment, which I'm against. We need a study. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone one.
Hi, Michaela Moran, Eighty School Street. I am in the South Acton Sewer District, and it's my understanding, from the way we're discussing this now, that the fund, the money that you're going to take this particular study fund from is based on excess sewer fees and excess payments by people who wanted to develop extra and add into that sewer system and not return to the people who have been paying into the use of this sewer system for all this time? I object. I object to my money being used for that. I think if the town wants to expand the sewer system, they should be putting this as a separate article. So, I am in support of this amendment.
Thank you. Article, I'm not. We're still on the amendment. Microphone four.
Hi, I'm David Martin. I live on High Street. There are several misleading things in the presentation for this amendment. First of all, saying that septic systems are cheaper. Unfortunately for me, I live just outside the sewer district in South Acton. And, and when I had to replace my septic system about the same time that the sewers were built in South Acton, we had to put in a high-tech system, which at that time cost forty thousand dollars and would, which would cost much more today, maybe fifty-five thousand dollars. And in addition, it cost me between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty dollars a month to supply it with electricity, because it has pumps and blowers in it. And I also have to have a certified inspector come out twice a year to inspect it for two hundred dollars. So, a, a septic system is not necessarily cheaper. Second thing is that in the presentation for this amendment, it was saying that the lack of sewers reduces development. But that's also not the case, because the high-tech systems like are in the ground at my house are easily put in a development of, you know, ten or, or twenty units. You know, spread out over those units, it's not an expensive upgrade. I think we do need to study sewers for, for West Acton. I think it's unfortunate that restaurants in West Acton have to serve on plasticware, because they can't have a dishwasher, or they have to have a tight tank that needs to be pumped every week or two. I think we, we, this needs further looking into, so I'm against the amendment.
Thank you. Microphone two.
Hi, I just wanted to say that I support anything that promotes, helps out the small businesses in West Acton. I've spoken to businesses who can't have enough tables, can't have enough dishwashing, et cetera. And they, several of them have said it would really help them. So, I'm not clear how this is on the steps toward West Acton sewer, but I would like to see it included, because it helps moves us, move us toward that.
Thank you. Microphone one.
Yes, Madam Moderator. That's hard to say. I'd like to call a question on this amendment.
There is a motion, there has been a motion and a second, second to cut off debate. Requires a two-thirds majority. All who are in favor, please say aye. Any who are opposed, please say nay. The motion does carry. We will cut off debate and vote on the amendment, which is displayed on the screen. All who are in favor of the amendment, please say aye. All who are opposed, please say nay. The amendment fails. Now, back to the main motion. Much of the discussion we've already had, I think, does cover that. But if there are any additional comments, we can take them at this time. Microphone one.
Hi there. I'm Larry Kana. I'm the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. You've already seen up on the slide where we stand, but I wanted to reiterate that the Economic Development Committee unanimously supports this article. We've seen some healthy business growth in West Acton in recent years, and the biggest barrier now to additional growth, especially for businesses like restaurants, is lack of sewers. So, we encourage all of you to support this particular article. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone two.
Eleanor Matthews, 241 Central Street in West Acton. I'm wondering what the betterment fee will be for West Acton residents should we get sewed.
Ms. Adachi.
Right now, that, there are ranges, there are rough estimates that we could provide, but I don't want to be too misleading, because this is, we still are in the process of trying to figure out what the exact area would be, how many properties would be included, whether they'd be commercial or residential. But I don't know if the town engineer wants to, or, or Jack Troyal wants to offer a rough estimate, based on what we know.
Sure. The conceptual range at this time is twenty-seven to thirty-five thousand for each betterment. The betterment methodology does vary based on the property, so that would be for a typical single-family home. Typically, condos are a smaller number than that, and larger commercial uses are a multiple of that, based on some approved formula that were used in the previous project.
Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone three.
Tara Frederick, West Acton. First of all, I'd like to say that the brochures or the flyers that they're handing out, the cost goes up to forty-two thousand dollars per house. And the flyers that were passed out at the forum that compared the onsite septic to the sewer claimed that the onsite septic was cheaper, but they were using different numbers there. So, it seems like the numbers change depending on who they're talking to. numbers there. So it seems like the numbers change depending on who they're talking to. But tables to teapot, according to the calculations, would owe $57,900 on the low side. Unicorn, $66,000. New London, $42,000. So a lot of these figures are, look really expensive. And I wish that we would pressure our Board of Selectmen to study the use of a localized system that would be much more affordable and wouldn't cost people that didn't need to have a system. And I also wanted to say that that CWRMP, they guaranteed that it wouldn't be a mandate, but now they're holding it up as a mandate. So I just wish they'd be consistent. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone one.
Madam Moderator, I'm just wondering if I might just respond to that.
Was there a question?
No, but it's just, she's contradicting things that are, well, she's saying things that are opinion but not fact. Okay, thank you.
Microphone one, please.
Thank you. Robert Boran, Acton, Wright Terrace. I don't have anything particular to say about this amendment, and what I'm going to say may seem somewhat idiosyncratic, but I've come here to deliver a specific message because I'm at home thinking about how this meeting went last night, the things I heard about it, and what I otherwise know to be going on. And I'm not so much talking to you, I'm talking to the audience. You need to understand that the Board of Selectmen misrepresent facts, and they quash dissenters.
Excuse me, sir.
John Benson did that last night.
Excuse me, sir, are you addressing the article?
John Benson did that last night. He quashed the letter. He said it.
Please only speak to the article at hand.
Thank you.
That's my right. As free speech, I can tell you folks that you're lying. And that's the only reason I come on.
I believe there is a speaker at microphone one.
Michelle Holland, 5 Houghton Lane. I want to encourage you to move forward with this. I'm a Realtor in the area. I believe Nancy wanted to hear from Realtors.
Wait, pull it, yeah, there you go.
Is that better?
Yes.
Should I start again?
Please do.
Michelle Holland, 5 Houghton Lane. I want to encourage people to vote for this, to move forward on sewers. As a Realtor in the area, Nancy had asked about Realtors' comments and thoughts, and I have to tell you, everybody I work with and deal with asks for sewers and has questions about septic. It's a long process that we're going through, but I encourage you to keep going. Remember taxes, we all pay into a tax system. We don't all get exact benefits from this or from that. Please support this article.
Thank you. Seeing no other speakers, we will vote. Oh, sorry. Yes, I see you. Go ahead at microphone one.
George Kaplan, 3 Highland Road. I just don't understand this article. Is all this money for a study, for instance, I read, "The article requests funding for operation of THE municipal sewer system." Is that the current municipal sewer system?
Yes, go ahead and answer.
Yes.
So how much of this money is for the study?
The study, it doesn't say so in the motion, but in my first slide, which, where is it? I don't know how to go backwards on this. It doesn't, my control doesn't work. But, okay. On this slide, it explains that the total budget for the Sewer Enterprise Fund is just over $2 million of that. The bulk of the funding is going to come from the users in the district, and then the balance is going to come from reserves. And from the reserves, there will be $225,000 going toward the proposed study.
Okay, I guess I would ask, is what we see in writing here what we are voting on?
This is, yeah, this is the effect. I mean, the motion and the warrant article don't lay it out clearly. The town manager's report that's in the warrant, which probably five people read and they're all in the FinCom, does lay out the details of using $225,000 from the Sewer Enterprise budget for this purpose.
Okay, having taught a writing course twice, I would just like to encourage that in the future, maybe the motions could make more sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone one.
Richard Fallon, Faulkne Hill Road. I don't understand how a study is within the scope of the warrant article. I don't, I see the article, I don't see anything about a study.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I had another slide. This is, this is using reserves. It's, I have to emphasize that this is not using funds from users in the sewer district. It's from extra money that was collected largely from, from people who wanted to intensify the use of the property beyond what the basic betterment fee was. And so it's those funds that are being used toward the study, and this is not the first time that the Sewer Enterprise budget has used reserves for a study of possible expansion or continuation of sewer-ing in another place.
But again, I mean, it's not within the scope of the article, though, because number one, it doesn't say anything, and number two, you're using money from people who are in the sewer district to study about whether you're going to expand that sewer district elsewhere. So however you, you know, however you slice it, you're using money from the people who are in that sewer district for a different purpose.
Excuse me, sir, I think, I think we have our answer here.
Did, but the moderator, is it, is it within the scope of the article? That's, you moderate.
That is not for me. But I think the town manager has a response to your question.
Thank you. The proposed Sewer Enterprise budget includes the cost to operate the sewer next year, and includes the cost of capital projects within the Sewer Enterprise retained earnings account, which we're proposing to do. This is how it was proposed when we released the budget presentation on December 17th, and it's how it's been discussed throughout the budget process.
Microphone one.
Whoops, I'm sorry. I didn't see you down. Microphone one first, and then microphone three.
Hi, Judy Katancek, Windsor Ave. I guess my question is, if we go through with this, okay, we go through with this, this, it gets accepted, the study will be done, and then we'll come back to town meeting and do this again in a different vein. If, if this all goes down, do the people who don't want it have to pay for the betterment?
Ms. Adachi.
That's a yes?
If you, if, by mean, by going down, you're using, well, something colloquial, it takes me back to my youth. It happens. Yes. People who are in the sewer district would be obligated for a betterment, which, as I explained, it can be spread out over 30 years. And the exact number for which, with regard to a potential West Acton sewer-ing, is kind of up in the air because we don't really have precise, provide precise lines on where the West Acton sewer-ing might go and what properties would be included. But yes, the betterment is the thing, but that you're obligated for if you're in the sewer district. Whether you connect is, is up to the condition of your septic system. If the Health Department has declared that your septic system is kaput, then you're probably going to have to connect, unless you want to incur the expense of replacing your septic system, which probably most people wouldn't if they have a sewer going by, but.
Will we be made aware of where it's going to go as?
Ms. Adachi.
Madam Moderator, yes. As I explained in my original presentation and also my response to the proposed amendment, this is just a proposal for a study. And the whole proposed construction and I guess detailed engineering would require another proposal to go to town meeting. And long before that, there would be a lot of public information sessions because this is a really complicated issue. It can be controversial. People's emotions can get hot, and a lot of misinformation sometimes gets circulated that gets people alarmed. So we would want, do a lot of public outreach before, well, I should say, we just, I don't know. I'm not going to be probably involved, not as a selectman, but the town would do a lot of public outreach before the time came to pursue construction and, well, detail design and construction funding, so.
Thank you. Microphone three.
Do I have to?
There you go.
I'm Colleen Fillmore, Jackson Drive. I called to move the article.
You moved the previous question?
Yeah, whatever that, yeah.
Is there, is there, is there a second?
There is.
There, it has been moved and seconded to cut off debate. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion does carry. We will now vote on the actual article, number 21, Sewer Enterprise Budget. Does require a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion does carry. And I believe Mr. Ashton's break is over.
Well, that was quite a baptism of fire.
That was okay.
No. Ms. Berry, you may have second thoughts at this point. We move to Article 25, which is to accept legislation for an agricultural commission. Ms. Adachi moves that the town accept Chapter 40, Section 8L of the Massachusetts General Laws, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to create an agricultural commission consisting of five members. Do I have a second? The motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Adachi, before you begin, let me just explain to town meeting members how we're going to handle this, because you've tried to confuse us with this one. You've indicated that the presentation you're about to give actually covers both Article, the motions under Article 25 and 26, which should help save time. But we can only debate and vote on one motion at a time. So I hope town meeting members will be cognizant of the fact that we will first deal with Article 25, then Article 26, but Ms. Adachi is going to really speak to both of those in her presentation. So, and if people go astray, I will do my best to try to rein them in. But you have indicated it will only take five minutes for you to deliver your presentation, so please proceed.
Yes, I'm like Ms. Green. I talk fast. But before my timed presentation starts, I would like to introduce at least some of the members who have been involved in this venture, which started, I think, in mid-2017. This is the AgCom Right to Farm Working Group. Bettina Abe is to my immediate left, Natural Resources Division, and Heidi Porton is actually a farmer. People, farmers don't look like farmers all the time, you know, if you're thinking about somebody with, you know. Susan Mitchell, Deborah Symes, AB Farmers Market, which is now in its, what, 10th or 11th year, 11th year. One of, I guess, the founding members or founding founders. Susan Mitchell Hart, who is the Acton Conservation Trust's president, and, oh, Fran Portante, who's also in Natural Resources Division. And finally, but last but not least, Tom Tidman, who is the Natural Resources Division Director. We also have Pat Hearn, who is another farmer. He is out of town. And Matthew Selby, who's the Land Use Department Director, who I saw earlier today but is shy and is wisely staying in the audience, so he won't be on the spot. So now my timed presentation will start. As Mr. Moderator explained, I'm doing sort of a dual presentation of this article, Article 25, which is to create an agricultural commission, and Article 26, the companion, which is to accept or create an Acton Right to Farm bylaw. The general purpose of the two collectively is to heighten awareness of agriculture, farming in our community. I, the senses that most residents really like, the presence of farms. We don't have that many in town. They like farmland. And I think that it's in the mutual interest of farmers and residents and businesses to understand what the concerns of the other are, because it's not just farms that may create concerns for residents. Some of the things that residents may do in spraying for mosquitoes and ticks may also concern farmers. But ultimately, the idea is an education process and also to help preserve the farms and farmland that we currently have. The Agricultural Commission is going to be a creature of Massachusetts statutory law, which is reproduced in the warrant and probably makes this whole issue seem a lot more complicated. But the AgCom doesn't have any enforcement authority. It is really to be an advocate for the agricultural committee, community. And the responsibilities can vary. I think that in the summary in the warrant, there's an idea of what kinds of responsibilities this group would like to see the Acton AgCom exercise, largely public outreach, education, provide a place where farmers or people who are really into farming would get together and share information. But neighboring farm, farming, communities have used their commissions for land use and long-range planning, and a lot of the education and awareness, as well as sort of intervening, I guess, in farm neighbor and town relations. The Right to Farm bylaw actually has created some concerns because people think it's a bylaw, so it's a law, so it must, there must be something new going on. Well, it actually doesn't change anything, and then people ask, well, why are we having it? Well, it's to heighten awareness of the importance of agriculture by restating the existing Massachusetts statutory protections for agriculture, including a provision in the Massachusetts Constitution and a number of different Massachusetts statutes. The Right to Farm bylaw actually would provide a role for the Agricultural Commission, if there is one, which there will be, I hope, if town meeting approves it tonight, to provide an advisory role to town boards with regard to farming disputes, which is an ideal, what we, I think, here in this group are contemplating as well. Creating an AgCom and having a Right to Farm bylaw is consistent with, well, the Open Space Plan and also the Acton 2020 Plan, and especially the establishment of an agricultural commission to provide advocacy for agricultural concerns. This is really important. This will not preempt, the Right to Farm bylaw will not preempt any existing standards. So if we have public health and safety concerns that the Board of Health is, has purview of, or there's environmental concerns, wetlands protection that the Conservation Commission has purview of, those don't change. Those still apply to agricultural activities as well. They don't get a free pass just because they're agricultural. This is a map showing the surrounding communities. All the ones in green have a combination of agricultural commissions and Right to Farm bylaws. I would just note that there's a slight difference for Concord. They actually have an agricultural committee, which is a creature of the Board of Selectmen. It's kind of does the same thing that an agricultural commission does. I think that there are circumstances where the authority of that committee could be more circumscribed, unless the Board of Selectmen give it more authority. So, finally, questions. And this is a picture of Stonefield Farm, aerial photo provided by Pat Hearn, who is the farmer not here. Thank you.
Ms. Adachi, I assume the Board of Selectmen recommend this?
Yes, the Board of Selectmen unanimously recommend approval of this article. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Finance Committee has a recommendation?
Since this does not have a financial impact for the town, the Finance Committee does not make any recommendation.
Thank you. Open it up to town meeting members for debate and questions. Recognize the speaker at microphone three.
Tara Fredricks. I'm actually in favor, generally in favor, although I have an issue with defining animals as food. But my question is to Town Council. I have asked the same question to employees, volunteers in the committee, all who can walk away without any penalty on our municipal immunity, but the Town Council has her license that she has to worry about. And so I would like the answer to come from her or somebody else that's on the, in the Town Council employ. And this is the question. So if this does not trump health and safety laws, then under what case law or what home rule legal tenets does this do that? So in other words, if it doesn't trump the local bylaws, then why do we put it in place? And so I would like to be assured by somebody with a legal license, municipal license, to operate as a lawyer, to state and tell me and assure me that it does not trump our local health and local and state health and safety laws. Thank you.
Council?
Sure. So the bylaw by its very terms is subsidiary and does not trump those health and safety and environmental and zoning regulations that are in place. If you look at Section 3 of the proposed Right to Farm bylaw, which is in Article 26, the final sentence of Section 3 makes it clear that the final sentence of Section 3 makes it clear that those, the provisions in the Proposed Right to Farm bylaw do not trump the existing zoning and health regulations.
Recognize the speaker at microphone number one. Oh, hang on just a second. It's blinking for some reason. Can we get microphone one to work, please? Well, they're all blinking right now. We have a portable mic. How about we try that? Thank you. Thank you very much.
Is this working? Thank you. I just had a question for clarification on, on this slide and, and that recent statement. Stonefield Farm, 91 Martin Street, that's the Simeone's Farm, correct? I think you called it something else.
Ms., Ms. Adachi?
Yes, I believe that's the case, but I'm getting, I'm getting yes from my, my assistants in the.
Okay. I think you called it Pat Hearn's Farm, but this, this is the Simeone family's Farm.
No, no, I, I, sorry, Mr. Moderator. I, I said that this was a photograph that Pat Hearn provided. I was getting, giving him credit for providing the photograph because I did not find this.
Oh, okay, that slid by really fast. Thank you.
Shall we try microphone one? All right, excuse me, three.
I just can't help but wonder if town meetings some couple of hundred years ago, what would have thought of us sitting here proclaiming that we need to pass an article called Right to Farm?
I, oh, I recognize the speaker at microphone two.
Danny Factor 11 Davis Road. I just wanted to give my understanding of the legal significance as far as the matter that Town Council just commented on. I'm a local attorney. While it is true absolutely that there's no superseding of any ordinance such as the health code and whatnot, there are provisions in Right to Farm that do give protections to farm from the point of view, farms from the point of view of the amount of noise they make and the amount of dust that they create. And nationwide, when there have been what are called nuisance lawsuits against a farm that is alleged to be interfering with the rights of abutters, the fact that a municipality is right to farm can be something used by a judge as persuasive in deciding a closed call. So I would disagree that there's no legal significance at all. It does give protections to farms that could have legal significance. My personal position is that I think it would be wonderful to have protections, in particular for local food production, but I do have some concerns about some of the provisions in this warrant article that does seem to give a great deal of protection to pollute, to make noise, and to create dust. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no one else standing, so we will vote. This is the motion under Article 25, which takes a majority. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. We will now move to the motion under Article 26. Ms. Adachi moves that the town adopt the general bylaws amendment as set forth in the article. Do I have a second? Motion is made and seconded. Ms. Adachi, do you have anything to add, other than your recommendation of the board?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. No, the Board of Selectmen unanimously voted to recommend this article as well.
And does the FinCom have a recommendation this time?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The FinCom does not have any recommendation.
Thank you. Any town meeting members that wish to comment on this motion? I believe we have one speaker at microphone two.
Andrew Eisenberg, 13 Deacon Hunt Drive. I'm a resident. I'm surrounded by residences, so this bylaw does not affect me directly. Looking at the text in Section 3, it talks about agricultural activities that occur on holidays, weekdays, weekends, night or day, noise, odors, dust, fumes, and it says that is hereby determined that whatever impact may be caused others through these practices is more than offset by the benefits of the farming community. This seems like a real burden for single-family residences. I would urge people to vote against this.
I see no one else standing or approaching a microphone, so we will vote. This takes a simple majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. We will now move to Article 27, which is to amend the general bylaws, Chapter N, Demolition Delay. Ms. Green moves that the town adopt the general bylaws amendment as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Green, do you wish to comment on this, or are you going to delegate your authority to someone else?
I will delegate my authority, but I can give the Board of Selectmen's recommendation now if you'd like, or I can do it after their presentation.
Why don't we, why don't we hear from these gentlemen down front? I believe it's Mr. Maxwell. He's going to give a presentation of about seven minutes, I believe. You may proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm Brad Maxwell. I'm here representing the Acton Historical Commission with regard to our proposed changes to Chapter N of the town bylaws, which relate to the procedure for demolishing historically or architecturally significant buildings. We actually began the process of looking at this bylaw back in 2017 as part of our process of always refreshing our custodianship and looking back at what had happened in the last 10 years since we had previously updated it. And what we were seeking to accomplish were to allow an easier administration and better understanding of our bylaw, to incorporate new technologies that had come into play since the last time we updated it, and address gaps or blind spots or things that kept coming up over and over in our meetings and in our handling of the bylaw, and also to align with statewide guidance. One important point here is that we were not seeking to expand or change the number of properties that are covered by the bylaw. There is no change with respect to that at all. We consulted a lot of different resources over the last 18 months or so. We had a lot of robust discussions at our public hearings, our own meetings over the course of the last 18 months. We consulted with officials in the town, particularly those who have an interest in administering the bylaw and telling us when there's a demolition permit that is in our purview. We worked closely with Town Council to fine-tune the wording and make sure that what we are putting forward is legal and appropriate, and we hosted a workshop with Massachusetts Historical Commission that came to Acton and explained the trends and what they're seeing and what they're recommending as far as demolition delay bylaws across the state. We followed and looked through their guidance and their, their guidebook in particular and their model bylaw, which were not published or available at the time that we last updated our bylaw, so this is fairly new stuff for us, and it resulted in a handful of changes. We are asking that the whole bylaw be replaced with a new rewritten bylaw, but in fact, the, most of the bylaw is exactly as it is today, but there were too many different bits and pieces interjected here and there. So I'm going to outline the primary pieces here, the primary changes. First, we clarified the definition of what constitutes a demolition. The purpose of doing so, as we said here, is 25% or more of any single facade, was to allow the building department to know when this is triggered and when it's not, and to provide a clearer guideline for them. We also provided for notices to abutters, which, believe it or not, we've been doing all along, but was not actually required as part of the bylaw, so we wanted to make sure that we included that. We incorporated something called MACRIS in the bylaw, which is the Massachusetts Historical Commission's online tool for people to look up their own properties and see if it's listed on our cultural resource list. Our own, admittedly, our own resource list is an old PDF that's not searchable, and it's available, so you can look it up online, but it's, it's a lot less informative than what's available on MACRIS. We also incorporated the idea of the multiple listing service as an idea for folks who are looking to show that they've marketed their homes and have made a good faith effort to try and find a buyer for their homes before they come to us with a request to demolish. We are recommending that we extend the demolition delay period by six months. This is actually in keeping with the guidance from MHC and the trends about 10 years ago when we last updated the bylaw. It was, I want to say, two or three towns in the state that had an 18-month delay at the time. Now that's 10 or 11 already, and in large part because of the guidance from MHC in the direction that they are recommending that towns take to protect historical resources and encourage discussion with people who would seek to demolish their houses. We are aligning the decision on expirations, on decisions to two years, which aligns with the building code. This is mostly just to address questions that came up to us. How long does our demolition permit last? And we have added language that ensures that the demolition permits, when granted, are given to the landowner and that they become actionable when the landowner has all of the permits or other relief necessary to proceed with whatever plans they have in mind, so that there's not a demolition and then a failure of whatever the next step was and an empty lot results. We added a quick consultation process for the town. If the town is seeking to demolish buildings that are otherwise protected, then they're now asked to consult with the Historical Commission, which was not included before, although it did happen as a matter of course. And we added a brand-new clause on advice of Town Council that allows for demolition. It's kind of an exemption in the case of a situation where the building is a public safety hazard, or it would protect the, the public welfare to allow the demolition to proceed. So, in summary, we are seeking a clearer and more straightforward process that addresses some of the gaps that we had seen over the last 10 years. We are not changing the number of properties that are affected by the bylaw. We have extended the delay period to allow more workouts and more dialogue, but at the same time, we've balanced that with some other advances, such as the public welfare exemption, to allow demolition. We are trying to align with statewide trends and the guidance from the Massachusetts Historical Commission, and to incorporate things like better notices and better technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Green, your recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends Article 27, the amendments to the Chapter N Demolition Delay bylaw. The Historical Commission has worked for a number of years on reviewing the existing bylaw and developing these proposed updates. The proposal is based on the Commission's many years of experience enforcing their current bylaw. These changes improve the demolition delay process and provide additional common sense protections to historic structures in town. The Board appreciates the Commission's efforts to work closely with town staff to ensure that the updated process works better for everyone involved. This amendment is an important part of the town and Commission's work to protect historic buildings in our community, and the Board unanimously recommends Article 27.
Thank you. And does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
The Finance Committee has no recommendation at this, at this point.
Thank you. I will open it up to town meeting members for questions and comments. Recognize the speaker at microphone three.
Terrifedix, West Acton. I have mostly have questions, well, a statement, a good faith effort. I've been going to a lot of these meetings, and I haven't seen anybody during the delay period actually make a good faith effort to sell it, that they come for the demolition permit because they want to demo it. So I'd like to figure out how to tighten that up someday. 18 months, I think, is, I think we could do better than that. I'm in support of this, for sure. It's a lot of work you guys have done. I'm very much in favor of this. But Worcester, I think, is looking to go 24, and I'd like feedback offline somewhere to find out how many other are going to 24. Cambridge, I believe, I've heard has, has single property, single parcel HDCs to preserve these units, and the HDC can't keep up. I think that the next employee we hire should be Historic Preservation FTE to help us preserve these houses and get them set up for affordable housing. I think we've got to do more to preserve what exists. Thank you.
I recognize the other speaker at microphone three.
Judy Kronwasser, Parker Street. There was a building, I believe it was a one-room schoolhouse, that was taken down north of 2A, west of 27. Would this have protected that?
Mr. Maxwell, do you know the answer to that?
No, I don't believe that it was able to be protected. We, we did have the ability to use our 12-month delay at the time, but it was unable to be protected at the time. Whether it was 12 months or 18 months, wouldn't have mattered.
Okay, I see no one else standing, so we will take a vote. This is a majority vote. All those in favor of the motion as read, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The motion carries. We're up to Article 28. Ms. Berry, do you want to take over for a little while? I will, I'll go ahead and read the motion while you're walking up here. Ms. Gardner moves that the town adopt the general bylaws amendment as set forth in the article. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Gardner, to your motion.
Thank you. This bylaw will help with emergency and summertime repairs to the roadways. Right now, the Board of Selectmen doesn't meet every week in the summer, and if there, and the summertime is the time to repair roads and pipes underneath the roads, so this will help. We would have the town engineer be our designee on these issues, so I urge you to vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the town meeting? Oh, I'm sorry, we need to have recommendation from the Finance Committee.
Madam Moderator, the Finance Committee recommends this article.
Thank you. Now, comments from the, or questions? Microphone one.
It's not on. Oh, it's on. Judith Ehrenstein, 3 Gregory Lane, Acton. I'm the coordinator of Mothers Out Front, and I just wanted to be sure that when National Grid comes to repair leaks and they go through the board, that they are not getting permission from these other entities when they're coming to put in new pipeline.
If it's an emerg-
You're live.
If it's an emergency repair, they would go to the town engineer for that permit, but if it's an extension, a new extension, we would have to have a public hearing on that.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other members wishing to speak? I see someone moving. Not sure if she's going to the mic. She is not. Okay. Let us then take a vote on this. Requires a majority to pass. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion does carry. Article 29 requires two-thirds to pass. To see if the town will vote to amend Section 4-2 of the Charter of the Town of Acton by changing the number of planning board members, whoops, I'm not reading the motion. Ms. Gardner moves that the town amend the town charter as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Ms. Gardner.
Yes. This article would reduce the number of members of the planning board from seven to five, and from two associates to one. The board has been without seven members for many years, and that lack of a quorum sometimes means if there's a public hearing and there aren't enough members, even though the public has come to the hearing, the hearing has to be postponed. And some of those delays can create permit situations. Article nine will help to resolve that problem by reducing the membership to five. The Board recommends this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. There is no financial impact to the town. Actually, I used to sit on the planning board, it was my first committee, and we have no recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any meeting members wishing to speak at microphone two?
Hi, Jim Snyder Grant, Half Moon Hill. I'm the, as the co-president of Green Acton, we have a consensus statement from our board. Green Acton opposes this article. We would prefer that the work of the board be expanded to include additional planning and policy review for the town. We anticipate that an expanded mission would attract more people to the board, and that such planning and review will require the engagement of a full board of seven members. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone one.
Anne Chang, South Acton. I would like to know why you're reducing the number of associates, when I always think associates are someone who is a planning board member in training. And I think that rather than have just one associate, I think you should keep two.
Do you have a response to the question?
I'm just reading to see if that's in the law.
You knocked it down to five and one, when it was seven and two.
We don't seem to have it.
I don't have an answer.
May I make an amendment to ask you to put two instead of just one?
Are you, in fact, what? We do have a response from the planning director. The planning director would care to make the response.
One of the things that the planning board does is hear applications for special permits under the zoning bylaw, and the State Zoning Act provides that a town can have planning boards with five members and one associate, or more members and two associates. That doesn't apply when they hear subdivision applications, but special permits are quite often coming before the board, so that's why this says, that's why this is proposed as five plus one.
Thank you.
May I ask, it has to be only one? Is that what he's saying?
I believe that was the response, yes.
That's unfortunate.
Microphone two. Tara Fredericks, West Acton. I am also opposed to this. I think that they should be doing more work, more planning, actually planning, because you'll find, I'll say some things on that during the petitions. And I have no problem with the board not being able to have meetings because they haven't met quorum and having the developers inconvenienced. Thank you. Microphone one.
Yeah, I think I'm for this, because I spoke to the, somebody from the planning board, I think it was the chair of the planning board, who explained to me, and so this is sort of a question, to just confirm that I understand it, that because they haven't been, I'm just laughing at the breaking things, because they haven't been able to get quorum at meetings, it ends up in a position, in a situation where they need to have a vote be unanimous. You can't have a vote of three to one, say, the way it is right now. And so they needed to have all four people that were there voting unanimously, and it was very awkward and very hard to vote things. And, first of all, can I just confirm that that's correct, that that's part of the problem of having, not being able to get enough quorum? So I also would like to have it a more vibrant, robust board. I would like to see more people joining, but right this minute, it seems like we almost have to punish ourselves, I mean, the town, for not coming forward and signing up to offer yourselves to the planning board, and we can come to the next town meeting and make it bigger again, if we can get enough interest. But it sounds like it's a problem for the board right now, and so that's why I sort of reluctantly am for this.
Thank you. Microphone four.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I'm Greg Hutchins, Parker Street. As it happens, I'm also the chair of the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, and I can tell you that we just interviewed two applicants for the planning board. I don't believe any decisions have been made yet whether they will be appointed, but we have those two, and potentially even a third in the pipeline. So I just offer that information for what it's worth. Thanks.
Thank you. Microphone two.
Hi, my name is John Horn, 101 Central Street, Acton. As the last speaker just said, my concern is as if there are not enough people on there to have objective opinions about what the special permits are for, that we're just going to have rubber stamp, rubber stamp building throughout, in the thing. And I think that the more people we have on this committee, the better off we are.
Thank you. Microphone one.
I'm Wu Jili from Akron Park. I oppose this article, because Acton is growing. Have fewer planning board members means we have power concentrated on few people, let a few people to decide important business for growing population. That doesn't sound right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? I see one coming. Yes, sir. Microphone four.
Excuse, I feel compelled. I serve on the planning board. The planning board took no position on this article. First of all, we're not concentrating power with anybody, okay? The planning board is not a political body, it just adjudicates the bylaws. The current situation we are in, however, and by the way, I need to feel very compelled, we are not inconveniencing developers, we are inconveniencing our citizens. They're impacted more than any developer in town. We have a situation a month ago where we could not hold a public hearing, where a large number of people showed up because we did not have a quorum. This has been going on for many, many years. I'm thrilled to hear we have a couple more people that might join the board. We're still going to have the situation where you have something called a supermajority. So just so everybody understands, that means if we had, an applicant came in and we denied it, but we divided four against one, said okay, technically denied, because it was not a supermajority, it gets approved. Ladies and gentlemen, it's currently broken. It's not working. The reason this was proposed, and it did not come from the board, was our professional staff said this is a better way to deal with the situation and the reality we're faced with. And I really do take exceptions. It's not concentrating power at all. More people does not solve the problem. This, I've been on the board for 10 years, and this has been an ongoing issue. By the way, it affects not just our board, other boards, and I am concerned about some of the tone and tenor that I've heard at this town meeting, basically talking about boards here and casting aspersions that are totally inappropriate. Most of these people are volunteers. They are not paid. They're our neighbors. This is our community.
Thanks, Jim Snyder Grant. I just wanted to make sure that town meeting members understood that this being a change in the charter would require a vote of the general population in 2020, so that our volunteer shortage of the planning board is an issue no matter what we vote tonight, because it goes on for another year before there's even a potential change in the actual membership. So I just want to make sure people understand that, so that we still have this urgent question of getting more people on the planning board, and I'm really glad that people are volunteering, and we need some more people as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone one.
Hi, I'm David Martin, Ellerburn High Street. I just have a question. Are these numbers proposed, the five and one, are they minimum numbers, or are they the numbers?
Ms. Gardner.
They would be the minimum numbers.
So the board could have six, seven, eight members?
No, this, these would be the numbers.
Okay, thank you.
Microphone four.
George Morton, 26 Marshall Path. I'd like to move the previous question.
It has been moved and seconded to cut off debate. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion does carry. Debate is cut off. This motion does require a two-thirds majority to pass. Let us try first for a voice vote and see if that goes. All who are in favor of Article 29, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
The motion does carry by two-thirds. Is there a question regarding the veracity of that vote? All right, take out your clickers. Remember to turn on with the orange button without too much force. I declare the voting period is open. Use A for yes and E for no. The motion does carry by two-thirds. Moving on to Article 30. Mr. Yakubi moves that the town adopt the zoning bylaw amendments as set forth in the article. Do I hear a second? Mr. Yakubi, to your article. Turn on your, there you go.
Okay, thanks, everybody, and thank everybody for being at town meeting. I'm going to apologize upfront, this motion and the change in this article is fairly straightforward, so I am going to pretty much read from my slides. It's basically informational, and it's, I think, is very straightforward. So I want to start off by, what is this article about? It amends an existing regulation for accessory apartments, where it was adopted, so you can have accessory apartments today, that was adopted by town meeting back in 2012. This amendment just adds the ability to have a detached, as opposed to attached. Okay, what does it, what I want to kind of just review, so everybody has a frame of reference, is what does the current bylaw, because essentially, it's the current bylaw, except you can have a detached unit. Currently, the bylaw allows by right one attached accessory apartment. It can be no more than 50 percent of the principal resident, up to 800 square feet. No more than two bedrooms are allowed, separate entrances are required, and there's no exterior staircase. So again, that's just in place today, that's not being changed, and that would be applicable. Okay, continuing here, ground floor apartments must be adaptable for accessibility. No separate driveways are allowed. We require an additional parking space. It has to be owner-occupied, so you can't have a developer coming and building a house, building a unit, and renting it out. So there's no separate ownership. Special permit is required for apartment conversion of existing dwellings. If you have an existing separate, like a barn or a carriage, that can be made into an accessory apartment by special permit only. So what's proposed? We're going to allow by right, okay, one newly constructed detached accessory apartment as an alternative to an attached accessory apartment. This picture in the bottom kind of gives you an idea, that blue structure in the back would be an example potentially of a detached accessory unit. Okay, the detached units can be on the side or the rear of the lot, can be no larger than 500 square feet, and a permanent foundation is required. So you can't have a tiny house that's on a trailer, for example, be, everything else that's applicable in the current bylaw is applied. Why are we doing this? Or why is this coming up now? Quite candidly, it's because we have gotten lots of requests from residents in town. There's a new group in town called Housing For All. You heard before, the ACHC has come, and they've been approaching town, town officials saying, we need this, we would like to have this. Again, it expands the housing diversity for different price points, especially for singles and small households, increases rental income, and affords greater privacy for inhabitants of the apartment or the principal dwelling. Here are two examples. The one on your left shows an attached, on the right shows an example of a detached unit. Okay, this I thought was important in terms of, well, is it going to be an explosion of accessory apartments if we allow this? Okay? Actually, I think Joan was at a conference, and these are some numbers that we put together. The estimated number of existing accessory apartments, so since 2016, we have, we can do these in town, we've had, there's 50. do these in town, we've had, there's 15 to 20 in Acton, estimated. Right now, there are three that have been new since 2017. Other Massachusetts examples, we have, at least in Ipswich, since 2004, there's been 61. In Newton, there has been 23 new ones since 2017. Again, not exactly an explosion of activity. I did want to kind of close up, I think, in the Warren article best kind of summarizes this, and why we're doing this, this is demonstrated by the Acton 2020 objective. Again, this ties up back to a lot of what we've been talking about wanting to do in 20, then that, in objective 7.4, action items 5.111 and 7.41, I apologize if I'm citing paragraphs here, but, and the Housing Production Plan Strategy, there is a need for a diverse range of affordable housing options and a desire to support the financial ability of all residents to stay in Acton for a lifetime. This amendment addresses that need by removing barriers to increasing the range of housing options available to residents.
Thank you. Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
The Board of Selectmen unanimously supports this article.
Thank you. Does the Finance Committee have a recommendation?
Yes, Madam Moderator, while we respect the spirit of this article, after a robust discussion, we concluded that the unknown side effects of detached accessory apartments outweighed the potential benefits, and voted non-unanimously against this article.
Thank you. Do the town meeting members have comments or questions? Microphone three.
Well, I hope all the people that supported this will stand up and support it here, so people know that they're supporting it. I am in favor of this article. I have reservations about the lack of a special permit requirement, because people might like to weigh in and get notice that this is happening. And I also urge the planning board to go further and allow people to have the mobile tiny homes, I think that would be a wonderful addition to our community. Thank you.
Microphone one.
Deborah Seines, 109 Concord Road. Pardon me, I'm speaking as the other co-president of Green Acton, and I'm reporting a consensus position of the Board of Directors, and I'm commenting, actually, on both 30 and 31, because they're both go to the same content. Green Acton supports zoning bylaw changes that would enable homeowners to create small detached accessory dwelling units, because smaller units fill unmet needs in town for housing family members or people with disabilities, and those seeking modest accommodations. We don't have a position on which of these articles or any potential amendments is the preferable option. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone three.
Bob Van Meter, Hef Moon Hill, speaking as Chair of Housing For All, to support the article and say this is a step in the right direction of providing more diverse housing options for Acton. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone one.
Nancy Tavernier, Mohawk Drive, Chairman of the Acton Community Housing Corporation. I'm speaking on behalf of them. They have voted to support this proposed zoning amendment to revise the accessory apartments section of the bylaw to allow for detached units. This change addresses the need for smalling dwelling units as expressed by citizens taking part during the nine-month process when we created the town's housing production plan. And during the work on that plan, it was noted that the over 65 population will double by 2030, only 10 years off. Senior households will be one-third of the total households, with household sizes shrinking and the need for smaller units increasing. Many residents are now actively seeking downsizing and aging-in-place options so that they can remain in Acton. This zoning change offers an opportunity for more flexible housing options. An accessory apartment could provide space for family members, aging or otherwise, housing for caregivers, housing for any one- or two-person households. ADUs are not for everybody, probably only a handful in this room would ever consider it, but for the few that need it, it helps them stay in our town. Only three units have been built since the original zoning passed, it's hardly a land rush. I'll close with my favorite quote about housing from Barry Bluestone in Boston. "We need people to realize this housing is not about the great unwashed masses coming to their town," he said. "It's for you when you get old and you want to stay in your town."
Thank you. Microphone three.
Michael Bialas, 80 Willow Street. I'd like to emphasize that last point, a lot of us are gray hairs here, but not everybody is. If you're not, imagine yourself when you're older, think about your parents when they were in their late 70s, or their 80s, or the 90s. Think of what they look like, that's what you're going to look like. Think how they got around. That's how you're going to get around. The unintended consequences, I think the Finance Board was very ill-advised in this, we can see from other towns that there are very few people who establish these, the unintended consequences of not doing it are much clearer, and much more important, and will impact you. Also, you might consider, do your kids want to stay in this town? They can't afford it. They could afford it if you make a residence for them, either a small one, or move into the small one, and they can have the big one. This has been done. So if you want to maintain the character of the town, one of the important things about maintaining the character of this town is maintaining the people who are in this town, and letting them stay here, letting the younger people who can't afford to live here continue to live here, and perhaps letting some of the people who work here live here. Thank you.
Thank you. Microphone four.
Motion to move the previous question.
There is a motion and a second to move the previous question. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All who are opposed, please say nay. The motion has passed, debate is cut off. This motion does require a two-thirds vote to pass, so let's just go ahead and use the The voting period is now open, all who are in favor, press A, and if you are opposed, Has the voting period expired? The motion does pass by a two-thirds majority.
We are now to Article 31, which was a reasonable facsimile of Article 30. Given that Article 30 has passed, the motion is that Franny Osman moves that the town take no action. Do I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded, I know Ms. Osman is here, does she wish to speak to her motion? I suspect not. I'll turn to the Selectmen, do they have a comment, recommendation? Ms. Gardner?
The Board of Selectmen did not recommend this article.
Mr. Moderator, just to clarify, the Board of Selectmen did recommend taking no action on this article.
Okay, and that's the motion we have before us, not the other one. Okay, Finance Committee, do they have a recommendation about taking no action?
The Finance Committee recommended, or did not recommend this article, excuse me.
The Finance Committee recommends taking no action.
Anybody want to challenge those by approaching a microphone? I don't see anyone, so we'll take a vote. All those in favor of the motion to take no action, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The motion carries, thank you. We will now move to Article 32. This is the article to amend general bylaws. This is the plastic bag reduction, this requires a majority vote. I will read the motion. Carolyn Platt moves that the town amend the general bylaws by inserting Chapter AB, plastic bag reduction, as set forth in the article. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Platt? It should be right down there somewhere, I hope. Oh, the planning board stole it, and they said they weren't concentrating power, geez. I was already going to ask the town manager for an increase in the clicker budget, since we seem to be throwing those around tonight, too. Anyway, Ms. Platt, you may proceed with your motion, I believe you indicated you would need eight minutes.
I would like to first, before I start my eight minutes, I'd like to introduce the leaders of Ban the Bag Acton. We're a group of Acton residents concerned about plastic pollution and committed to reducing it. So I'm Carolyn Platt, this is Carolyn Tripp, Lee Stunts, Melissa Buono, and we have, very proud to have two high school students, Isabella Harshbarger and Paige Kelly. The plastic bag reduction states that starting January 1st, 2020, no thin film, single-use plastic checkout bags will be distributed in Acton, in retail stores and restaurants. Unfortunately, newspaper bags, produce bags, and these others will still be available, but worry not, there's still options for animal waste and for lining your waste baskets. Plastic bags are a problem, and why do we need such a bag ban? I'm going to touch on five reasons that plastic bags are a problem.
Excuse me, can we start the timer, please? Sorry. You got away with an extra minute there.
I can slow down. The first is, they are accumulating in huge numbers. The scale of the problem is daunting. Even if plastic bags are only a small part of the total plastic production, that small is big. Shoppers in the United States are using 100 billion plastic bags a year. It's notable that these bags are a highly visible sign of our waste. Well, that's the big picture. What about Acton? Our AB students, to get a sampling of Acton's plastic checkout bag use, took a 45-minute tally of the types of bags in shopping carts exiting three of Acton's supermarkets last October. Now, these results speak for themselves, and actually, what is so sad is that a plastic checkout bag is only used for an average of 12 minutes, which leads to the next problem. They're rarely recycled. Most people are putting out their best efforts, especially here in Acton, but as learning from recent news and our own transfer station, we are in plastic overload, especially since China closed its doors to 45% of all the world's plastic waste. Another depressing slide, there's a great disparity from 1960 to 2014 between the plastic we create, which is the brown line, and what gets recycled, the blue line way at the bottom. So, 7%, hmm. The other 93% is either thrown out with the trash, burned, or maybe shipped to the other side of the world. Plastic bags are a problem because they do not decompose. Yes, that means plastic never goes away. Instead of decomposing, plastic bags break down into what are called microplastics, some are so tiny that they are invisible to the naked eye. These microplastics seep into soil, water, and air in every corner of our planet, and plastic bags are one of the biggest contributors to these microplastics, especially in our In the past year, National Geographic, Scientific American, and other news purveyors have shared research about the health risks of plastic. Toxins attach themselves to these microplastics, and they enter the human food chain, and scientists are finding traces of plastic in the human body, and are studying the impacts of this on our health. It's also concerning that the air we breathe is polluted by the extraction and production of plastic from fossil fuels, and often later in life, by, later in its life, by incineration. And finally, plastic bags harm wildlife and cause litter. And in Acton, it seems these days you can't take a walk without finding plastic bags along the way. Both plastic and paper bags are not good for our planet. We are promoting reusable bags as the best means to a healthier environment. A reusable bag used for less than a year will address both paper and plastic environmental issues. Now, Ellie and Charlie George here have lived and shopped in Acton for 55 years. They are encouraging us to step away from a throwaway lifestyle by switching to reusable And you see here that the lifespan of a reusable bag is equal to that of 700 plastic checkout We can support the bag ban as individuals, and collectively, all these individuals make a difference. This is why 93 towns and cities in Massachusetts, including our neighbors, Westford, Concord, Sudbury, have bag bans, as shown here in blue, and that they can, they show that they can make even a bigger difference. At least 10, including Acton, are up for town meeting votes this spring. So, doing the math, 103 bag bans will send a strong message for the Massachusetts Legislature to pass a consistent statewide bag ban. And here's a news flash, yesterday, the state of New York banned plastic checkout bags. For those worried about the cost of reusable bags, Ban the Bag Acton is committed to giving free bags to those who need them. We got a $1,000 grant, and more money has come in that we will use to purchase these bags, and we'll give them out through the Council on Aging, the Food Pantry, religious institutions, and other organizations. And how about our local retailers? Well, so far, we've talked with more than 50 retail stores and restaurants. Their comments range from enthusiastic to, well, we'll be okay with it. Some have said they were wondering when Acton would actually come and get to this ban. At least 20 stores and restaurants, including Trader Joe's and Joseph A. Bank, eliminated plastic bags a while ago, and all have said that they would comply. Our very own homegrown Idwild Farms, along with Mass Hardware, Kitchen Outfitters, Rapskalian Table and Tap- Kitchen Outfitters, Rapskalian Table and Tap, and others, have shown great leadership by endorsing the bag, the bag ban. And our big grocery stores have already adapted to bag bans in other towns, and they're ready. They know what to do. You may be wondering what a bag ban will cost to the town. Like in many other towns, our Board of Health will be the enforcement agent at no new cost. Acton has made a commitment to the future through the environmental sustainability policy. And one way to turn that commitment into action is to remember, the next generations are depending on us. Please vote yes on Article 32.
Thank you, Ms. Platt. Does the Selectman have a recommendation?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen unanimously recommends Article 32 banning single-use plastic checkout bags in town. As you heard during the presentation, plastic bags cause significant harm to our environment in a multitude of ways, impacting our waterways, wildlife, and more. Last year, the Board of Selectmen signed a letter urging the state legislature to pass a statewide plastic bag ban, as a statewide ban would be easier for communities to enforce and stores and residents to follow. Unfortunately, the legislature failed to pass a bill last session, and the Board now feels that it should join the more than 90 other cities and towns in the Commonwealth, including many of our neighboring communities, in banning single-use plastic bags. Numerous local retailers have already voluntarily stopped using plastic checkout bags, and many residents already bring reusable bags, use paper bags, or forego a bag altogether. Like those stores and residents already have, this article recognizes the significant harm of plastic bags and brings our community in line with the many others across the Commonwealth and the nation already banning their use. As this bag ban aligns with the Board of Selectmen's environmental sustainability policy, keeps the pressure on the legislature to pass a statewide ban, and is an important piece in reducing the town's carbon footprint and impact on the environment, the Board unanimously recommends Article 32.
Thank you, Ms. Green. And I'm going to turn it over to the Finance Committee for their recommendation. I understand they have taken a contrary position and have requested a couple of extra minutes to express the reasoning behind that rationale, and I have allowed them to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have long considered myself an environmental advocate. As a family, we reuse and re-recycle as much as possible. We buy local, grass-fed meats, have paid extra to our electric service provider for wind energy, and we are raising our kids to be conscious of their global footprint. When I shop, if I forget my reusable bags, I have always chosen paper over plastic. For these reasons, I was eager to take on the plastic bag ban and prepare a report that would convince my fellow FinCom members to support this article. Banning the plastic bag feels like the right thing to do. It is clear that plastic is inundating our environment, and that as a society, we are not doing enough to properly recycle, dispose of, or reduce our use of plastics. With this in mind, I looked into two factors when thinking about a local ban. How much would it cost our local businesses and taxpayers? And would the positive impact on our environment make it worth the costs? I started with calling around to local large and small businesses to ask how a plastic bag ban would impact them. While some owners were happy to see a bag ban enacted, many expressed concern over the cost of switching to paper bags. Now, I understand that this article is intended to reduce all bag usage and encourage reusables, so let me just address that real quick. We are not the first to look at a single-use plastic bag ban. San Francisco and Ireland, among other places, have also banned these bags in order to reduce plastic bag litter. What happened in these instances is that the plastic bag ban alone did not cause any increase in the use of reusable bags. Everyone just switched over to the free paper bag. San Francisco and Ireland both saw a reduction in total bag usage only after they added a fee on paper bags. Today, we are voting strictly on a plastic bag ban. We are not voting on a ban with a fee on paper bags. We can assume, based on what we've seen in Ireland and San Francisco, that our shoppers will simply switch to paper bags. Let's talk about what that will mean. According to some of our large retailers, a plastic bag costs them a fraction of a penny, while a paper bag costs between 8 and 10 cents each. These are the bulk prices for our largest retailers. We can conclude that our smaller retailers will pay more. If a bag ban goes into effect and all of the people who currently take a plastic bag switch to the free paper bags, these retailers will see a large increase in paper bag usage. For retailers that have only ever before now offered a plastic bag, they will need to begin purchasing paper bags in the same quantity that they currently give out plastic ones. These retailers will need to cover the increased costs of buying paper bags. And so either our business owners will take a hit, or their prices will rise, and we, the consumers, will pay those new higher costs. Having the answer from a strictly financial point of view, I then looked to understand the environmental upside. What I learned surprised me. It turns out that there is a reason plastic bags were originally hailed as an environmental win. It's not just that paper comes from cutting down trees, and as an environmentalist, we really like our trees. It's that turning that tree into a bag is incredibly hard on the environment. The making of a paper bag takes more than two times the non-renewable energy as it takes to make a plastic one. The paper bag takes almost five times the amount of water, creates three times more in greenhouse gas emissions, and more than two and a half times the amount of acid gas emissions. Also, the runoff from paper bag mills produces 18 times the amount of water pollution in the form of harmful algal blooms, dead zones, and fish kills in a process called eutrophication. This paper bag is so much worse for the environment that you actually have to reuse it three times in order for it to equal a single use of the plastic bag. And that is only if you don't reuse or recycle the plastic bag. Once this paper bag is ripped, and you know it will, hopefully you'll recycle it. Recycling the paper bag takes 91% more energy than recycling the plastic one. Of course, plastic bags are more difficult for us to recycle, as it is necessary to bring them to drop boxes like those at Roach Brothers and Donnellan's. But when they are reused or disposed of properly, they require much less energy. I was as surprised as anyone by my findings on what seemed like a no-brainer environmental win. We do have a plastic problem, but this ban will create a bigger environmental problem. Although I reached out to the bag the ban proponents asking for research and data behind their movement, they couldn't provide me evidence that the upside of banning the plastic bag was better for the environment than the downside of using the paper one. In conclusion, banning the plastic bag without introducing a fee does not achieve the goals of this article to reduce overall bag usage, but instead will increase paper bag usage. Paper bags are more harmful to the environment than plastic bags. The large uptick we can anticipate in paper bag usage will cost our small and large businesses and our townspeople. For these reasons, the Finance Committee unanimously determined that it cannot recommend this article. Thank you.
Thank you. I will now open it up to town meeting members for debate and for questions. Recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Thank you very much. My name is Bill Romer. I'm president of Audubon Hill North and represent another generation here. I also spent a good piece of my life working for New York State's Environmental Conservation and in the East and internationally with Canada. The notion that we should continue with plastic bags is the most stupid thing I've heard in a long, long time. This would be the cheapest thing the town could do, because it's not going to cost the town anything. It is possible, as they did in Ireland when I lived there. I still have a bag that's 17 years old that I carry to the grocery store, and it still works. It's made of cloth. Plastic does not break down, as was pointed out. It gets into our foodstuffs. It despoils our countryside and the oceans. When I fished off Chappaquiddick Island for stripers and bat, and bluefish, it was always disconcerting to catch a plastic bag. There is no reason that we can't afford to pay for a simple bag that we can carry, even to work. It works in other places around this world. It can work here, very simply. The price of the plastic is beyond what is good for our home, this earth, our island home, which if we don't care for it, better than we have been, we're in grave difficulty. I would hope you would support this ban, encourage Jamie to go after the state senate, and for all of us to join our young people and of...
Thank you. I recognize the speaker at microphone number three. Just wait till it stops blinking, and perhaps it will work. If you don't put your hand on it, maybe it'll work better. No, don't, don't touch the microphone, and it will come on. I'm told. So, so the radio is telling me over here, too. But why don't we use the portable mic that Ms. Cadillac has? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Isabella Harshbarger, and I live at 47 Washington Drive. This is my first time voting and participating in town meeting as I turned 18 just two weeks ago. I will be voting...
Congratulations. I hope you'd use the pre-registration process.
I did, I did, yes. I will be...
Excellent.
I will be voting yes to ban single-use plastic checkout bags in Acton, because I think it is a very important step to helping reduce plastic pollution. Plastic checkout bags are a convenience and not a necessity. Using a reusable bag is simply an adjustment that we can all make and will send a message that we refuse to pollute our town and plan it with plastic. When I look back on my first vote, I want to remember that it helped ban single-use plastic bags in Acton and made a change in the world for the better.
Thank you. I recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Okay, Miles Fidelman, 531 Old Stone Brook. First of all, I just want to say that I've observed the bans working in Newton, where I recently lived, and in, we go shopping at Market Basket, one town over, where we and a lot of other people seem to be using reusable bags. I would ask two questions. One to the Finance Committee, which is, one would think that a shift to plastic ba, to, away from plastic bags would reduce our trash collection costs, or our landfill costs. And I've just wondered if that has been looked at. I'll ask the other question to the proponents.
Why don't, why don't we get the Finance Committee first, and then we'll do the second question. Does the Finance Committee have an answer?
We haven't spoken to the waste people.
Okay, I would think that would be...
But I will note that you still have to put all of your garbage in a plastic bag to get it into the transfer station.
Thank you. Your second question, sir.
My second question is, has there been consideration of adding a 5 cent per bag fee?
Excellent question. We, as a town, all towns in Massachusetts are not allowed to charge a fee. Cities can. And it would require, get the term, a home rule petition, which would take us first through getting approval here, and then it would have to go to the legislature, go through that, and then finally get the governor's position to have this home rule petition. So, simple answer is, we can't do it. But the state bill, if that passes, will allow fees for the state.
Mr. Moderator? Mr. Moderator?
I'm sorry.
Can I make a quick comment?
Do you have a point of order, or?
We'd like to respond real quick.
I didn't hear, you had one question, which you answered, and that's the only question I heard directed to the Finance Committee. Sorry. I recognize the speaker at microphone three.
Thank you. My name is Kate Crosby. I live at Half Moon Hill. I have, I work in the sustainability and energy fields, and I participate in national networks and state networks of leadership in these fields. And I appreciate the engagement on this issue by everyone in the room. I wanted to say that there is, this, this, I heartily endorse the plastic bag ban, and this is a solid and reasonable way forward on sustainability goals. It is true that paper bags have a larger greenhouse gas footprint than plastic bags, but they have other positive attributes, including that they are made from renewable resources. There is only one fix for the plastic bag problem, which is to stop producing and throwing them away. I, it is clear by the map that there is a lot of momentum around the state to passing a statewide ban. Acton is unable, as we heard, to pass a levy on paper bags. But that is intended as part of the statewide strategy. And I am very comfortable stepping into companionship with our other municipalities in moving towards a statewide solution. And I'm all set. Thank you.
Thank you. I recognize the speaker at microphone two.
Lauren Rosenzweig Morton, 26th Marshal Path. I have a question. You know, I believe in education. I'm a former teacher. And I'm hoping that all of you wonderful people can do some outreach to the community, not just us here, about, you know, switching over and not using the paper bags and using the cloth bags. So, can, would, would you be willing to do that?
Yeah, and to answer your question, we have plans...
Ms. Platt, I'm sorry. The question's actually technically directed at me, and then I get to direct it to you. So, as our former moderator used to say, you need to work me into this conversation at least a little bit. So, you may answer the question.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Now, let's see if I can remember the question.
See, that was a trick.
Yes, we do, we have plans. We've already talked to some classes in the schools, in the elementary schools. And one, one plan is to involve the kids in coming up with tips to remember those reusable bags. Maybe a tip a week or something like that. But, and we also will be giving out these free bags. And when we do that, we will be talking about their, the benefits.
Okay, I have more hope for the kids than the adults. I hope you do adult education as well. Thank you.
Okay.
I'm going to recognize our esteemed Senator, Senator Eldridge, at microphone number three. I'm seeing a large number of people at the pro-mic and very few at the con. So, I suspect the question may get called shortly. So, I would like to hear from our esteemed Senator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jamie Eldridge, Arlington Street, West Acton Village. Speaking in favor of this proposal. I, I wanted just to note that my first civic activity growing up in Acton was through the South Acton Cleanup Day, growing up in South Acton, co-founded by my mom, Betsy Eldridge. And what I remember back then is that a lot of the items were more often than not, fast food containers, a lot of beer cans, soda cans. I try to continue to do the Cleanup Day every year since then, and more and more, we're seeing plastic bags on our, on our roads and our neighborhoods. And so, we're really seeing something that we could really directly address by passing this ban. I do want to highlight that plastic bags have a particularly negative effect on our sea life. Approximately 80% of the litter in our oceans is plastic, and a lot of that plastic in our, in our oceans is plastic bags. It's been mentioned a couple times, statewide legislation, coincidentally, today, legislation that I have filed for the past six years to create this statewide ban on plastic bags, was heard by the Environment Committee today, and I testified in support of it. The bill does expressly allow retail stores to charge 10 cents for every single community. So, if this bill became law, if the state bill became law, then Acton would be able, and the retail stores would be able to charge 10 cents. The story that I brought to the legislature this morning before the Environment Committee was about a whale that had died with 88 pounds of plastic off the shores of the Philippines on March 18th. Since I read that story this morning before the Environment Committee, Channel 5 has reported that there was another whale that was found dead off the shore of Italy, having consumed 49 pounds of plastic. So, this is something that is happening more and... So, this is something that is happening more and more. I really do want to emphasize that local action and the true New England town meeting tradition has an impact on the legislature, and so this proposal obviously is for a ban on plastic bags or retail stores in Acton. I do think it will have a very positive effect in passing the statewide bill, and as was noted by Ms. Platt, New York State just passed this ban, so let's make sure that we are the third state in the country to pass this. And I think passing this proposal will help move that forward. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.[635.22][635.22](applause) Recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Hi, my name is Paige Kelly, and I'm only seventeen years old, so I would like permission to speak on this article.
Town meeting members, would you allow her to speak? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. You may speak.
My classmate and I have been working closely all year to help get this bag ban passed in Acton. As I have worked on this project, I discovered the two most important and forgotten harms of plastic bags. First, when plastic bag, bags break down in oceans, rivers, and soil, they do not go away. Plastics break up into microplastics that still pollute our water, and this can end up in our food chain. Unfortunately, I am still seventeen and cannot vote to ban single-use checkout bags tonight, but you can. Please do not let me down. My friends and I are counting on you.
Thank you. Recognize the speaker at microphone four.
Moderator, the applause is out of order.
Yes, I understand that. We should refrain from applause. Thank you. Recognize the speaker at microphone four.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I call the question.
Motion to cut off debate has been made and seconded. All those in favor of cutting off debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Debate is cut off. I will now call for the vote. This requires a simple majority to pass. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion carries. Now you can applaud. Proceed. I think we got here in all, if we get started. Okay. Yep. We're going to move now to Article thirty-three, which is a non-binding resolution. We in fact have several non-binding resolutions in front of us. I would like to try to proceed at least for a while here, maybe try to complete everything this evening. Can those who are leaving, please do it orderly. Thank you. This is Article thirty-three. Tara Fredericks moves that the town adopt the non-binding resolution as set forth in the article. Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Fredericks, are you here? Okay, I believe you indicated that your presentation on this motion will take eight minutes, and then succeeding ones will be considerably shorter. So, you may, you may proceed.
Moderator, and my slides are here. I'm so excited about the plastic bag ban. My god, can't wait till Fin, how starts the final stuff?
Well, we're now on Article thirty-three.
Okay, here I am. Okay, why are we doing these petitions? The next four articles are about land use. That's government deciding how land is used. Many say the town is being overdeveloped. Yes, and I've even heard officials say that their goal is to promote more development. So, it seems time to get more input from town meeting. The master plan, oops, the master plan, over a decade old, is still used for making decisions. The first goal of the master plan is to preserve and enhance town character. Objective one point one is to strengthen planning tools to manage growth proactively. Sometimes interim policy decisions must be made to ensure that a plan is on track, especially if there are competing goals in the plan. For example, the plan also calls for building more affordable housing. Can we do that without more buildings? We have thousands of apartments and condos in town. Is that enough to meet our affording, affordable housing goals? Do we care what people do with their land? Do we care how much water is being used by new development? These are all questions that I watch the committees and officials struggle with. Do we want to direct the Board of Selectmen to do something differently? Tonight, I'll ask you to consider four, oh, that's the background. Four mu-, I don't even have it here. Okay, of four municipal land use tools, all enabled by state law. I'll ask you to decide if you want to direct the Board of Selectmen to study these tools and propose new bylaws to town meeting so that you can vote on them in a future town meeting. Background to consider, we're currently building, we're currently losing more acres, two to three times more acres than we're preserving each year. What does that mean to us? Some building permits are allowed by state law, but are we allowing too much? Will we run out of key community resources? Consider a water study that was done a couple years ago by some local experts. The red line, the top line is where we're going to build through zoning, what's by right and a little bit by forty B, but that red line in the middle, that's where we, that's where our limit is for pumping. So, we're already planning to build more than we're allowed to pump by state law, what the state says that we can pump. So, town officials don't seem to be very worried about this. I've heard about plans to go find more water from other towns, ask the state to raise the limit, but is that good enough? Do we want to remain water independent? According to a survey of over two thousand people during the last master planning exercise, people were asked, what do you not want more of? After taxes and traffic, obviously, the number one answer was no more development and construction. But how much has been done to slow building? We're still allowing, as I said, two to three times more acres than we preserve, maybe even five times more, because I can't get the numbers. Do we want the numbers? I think so. How long before we're no longer water independent? With all this going on, who's in charge of developing and monitoring key metrics? So, I went, oops, I'll leave that there. I went to, around asking who's in charge of doing this planning. I went to the Board of Selectmen and I said, who does the planning? Who does, who figures out how much water we're going to need, how much acres are left, and, and, and making sure that we don't build for, build for the road capacity? Who does that? And they said, the planning board. So, I went to the planning board, and I said, the Board of Selectmen tells me that you guys do planning. The answer was, no, we don't. We review and permit building. And I was like, okay, that's fine. I went, and they said, how do we change that? They said, we have to go to the Board of Selectmen and get them to change it. So, I went around in circles for a while, and then finally the answer was, the planning department will tell us when. And that's a whole other issue, because the planning department accepts fees, and the new tax revenues goes into the general budget, so they're never going to say anything about this. So, how much has been done to slow building? Oops, I was just a little here. So, studying the resources and needs of the town. This is under the planning board responsibility from the town website, particularly conditions affecting public welfare and safety related to land use and development. So, what kind of studies have been done? Pretty much all I see is more infrastructure for more development. Kelly's Corner, West Acton. I don't see the studies that I think we need. And here's one idea. The planning board, excuse me, the American Planning Association's Massachusetts chapter points to a planning guide that says that there are two things that planning boards do. They review and approve building permits. Secondly, they plan. But a quick review of towns in Massachusetts indicate that many planning boards do not do planning. In fact, their charters specifically exclude it. So, I found that very interesting and thought, I wonder if town meeting thinks that this stuff should change. So, I couldn't really figure out what question to ask, so I said, well, I'll put some land use questions in front of them, and they're all non-binding. And I said, okay, I'm going to say, do they want a moratorium? Here's one idea. Stop residential building until we figure out who's in charge. Till we figure out what the heck is going on. So, people ask me, gosh, you know, if we stop building, then what happens? So, yes, there's the scare tactics from the Pro-Building Society. Oh, gosh, if we stop building, everybody will race to build before it happens, and building will explode. But you got to, you know, realize where the source is, okay? So, other people who I've asked that are not pro-building say, it works. And so, if you think about the appreciation of what happens when you limit a supply of new building, the appreciation on the existing buildings, your property values go up. Now, this is really important, because I plan to come back to you guys and ask for you to fund a condo purchase program next year, and I want you guys to feel comfortable to pay for that, even though it's not going to be that much, because your property values are going up. Because I think there's a Joe social justice issue where we keep building, and the trickle-down thing doesn't work, and people are homeless, and they are not getting the housing that they need, and we can do it with existing resources, with existing water. I won't go on about that. So, I'm going to say that I think that we should stop residential building, with some exceptions, of course, for a period of time, but this is not a binding vote. This is a recommendation to ask the Board of Selectmen to study the issue and bring back a vote for you next year. Just quickly, do I have, no, no more time. Maybe somebody will ask me some questions. Thank you.
Does the Board of Selectmen have a recommendation on this resolution?
Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to not recommend this article, and I also, with your permission, would like to add, provide additional comments if my voice doesn't get lost. But two minutes, you said?
Well, you're down to one forty-five.
Okay, the Article thirty-three proposal takes a single issue, new residential construction, out of the bigger picture, long-range planning and context in which it belongs and for which town. The town already is accounted with a comprehensive community plan, zoning bylaw, other plans and guidelines, as well as provisions for regular review, discussion, and updating of all of them. One plan curiously omitted from the Article thirty-three presentation is the twenty-fourteen to twenty-twenty-one, excuse me, open space and recreational plan, perhaps because the OSRP doesn't fit in with the argument in the Article thirty-three presentation that all of the town's planning efforts aim to promote development. The regular updating of all of these documents entails lots of research and analysis and abundant public participation to assure that the final products fairly reflect and serve the needs and interests of the general public. New master plans and zoning provisions also require town meeting approval. The existing processes actually serve the town very well, and the town's planning and other land use department staff members possess the professional training and experience to provide the essential guidance that residents need. My quick research revealed that in recent years, four Massachusetts communities, Marlborough, Malden, Saugus, and Weymouth, out of three hundred fifty-one Massachusetts communities have considered or adopted construction moratoriums. That doesn't rise to the level of popular, leaving aside the issue of whether popularity is a sound basis for adopting a moratorium as a land use control. Marlborough, Malden, and Weymouth are cities. Saugus has a town manager and Board of Selectmen. Three of the adopted or proposed moratoriums were for multifamily developments. In Weymouth, a resident recently proposed a moratorium on construction that the mayor believes will divert city planning staff from higher priority matters and should be addressed via zoning. The slide presentation contains other questionable assertions, including about the building rate in Acton, that in the interest of time, I will not address individually. Again, the Board of Selectmen does not recommend approval of Article thirty-three.
The finance committee have a recommendation?
The finance committee does not recommend Article thirty-three.
I will open it up for...
Mr. Moderator, just you asked, you said I could have some time to rebut?
No, I did not. No, I never said that.
I don't know, I think, why'd they get it last time? But, all right, go ahead.
No, no, Ms. Fredericks, no. We discussed this Thursday night, and there was no time for rebuttal. Recognize the speaker at microphone one.
Mark Mattson, McLeod Lane, West Acton. I would like to make a, an observation. I've been living in the town with my family for a long time, and we were here when, several years ago now, the zoning was changed to allow clustered zoning. And unlike most communities, there was no limit put on the number of additional homes that could be put in this new plan, and so consequently, fifty percent is, is kind of a typical number that would arise. And because of this, there's been a lot of pressure put on the town resources. Whereas, if you compare it to other communities, and Pembroke, I think is one example, they also went to allow more clustered zoning in an effort to preserve open space, which I think is a very good goal. But they limited the number of additional homes that could be built to twenty percent. And more importantly, they stipulated that of those extra homes, some of them be designated for low-income housing. And I see that implementation being a huge missed opportunity, because we could have saved more open space, we could have gotten affordable housing, and we could have had far less of an explosion in growth. I don't know if you remember, but several articles earlier, one of the presenters alluded to the fact that there was a huge increase in towns, in our town's development in the two thousand timeframe. So, I, my, my point is, and how this ties into this, is that something needs to be done, and I don't see anything being done to curtail the development that we're seeing. And it's putting pressure on the schools, it's putting pressure on the water supply, on the traffic, and so forth, and these are all costs that we're having to bear, and they have indeed changed the character of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. I recognize the speaker at microphone number two.
Lucia Hicks, Sawmill Road, Acton. I have a lot of sympathy for the idea of not covering the entire town of Acton with housing or with building in general. I think this is too blunt an instrument. Ms. Fredericks mentioned, if we have a building moratorium, then what will happen? Building, housing prices will go up. We talked earlier tonight about the fact that housing prices in Acton are already prohibitive for a lot of people, and we've had some articles that have tried to address that problem. I, I don't think it's a good idea to, I, I think we're going to have unintended economic consequences. We're going to have, as I said, housing prices skyrocketing. I don't think that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. I recognize the speaker at microphone number four.
Ray Yocobi, five-five-four, Raydon Way. I feel compelled to ask a question. I feel like in, in another alternate universe right now, we extol how nice this town is. We extol, we like this community. What I'm hearing from this presentation is we're living someplace that we don't want to live. I'm hearing that we have a town government that we can't trust. I'm hearing all sorts of things that are blatantly not true. The other problem I have, if you look around the room right now, how many people do we have here? How many voters do we have in town? Fourteen thousand? Beware of voting for a quote-unquote "non-binding resolution" that doesn't mean anything, because it will be brought back later as a club saying, I got town meeting to agree. Do we represent all fourteen thousand people in town right now? I think not. I think more importantly, having lived in town for thirty-two years, I've seen good development in this town. I think I've seen good faith efforts on, on the part of the town government, and I think when we work together, we get great things. So, I, I urge you to vote against this resolution.
Recognize the speaker at microphone one.
Deborah Symes, Concord Road. I am standing at a pro microphone, but I'm neither pro nor con here. I'm speaking again as the co-president of Green Acton to make a statement which says, Green Acton recognizes that the issues identified, oh, and I forgot to say, I'm speaking to thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-six, so I don't have to pop up here every time.
Thank you.
Green Acton recognizes that issues identified in these three articles are worthy of investigation and discussion. Although we're not prepared to recommend or oppose these articles at this time, we do recommend that over the course of the next year and beyond, town staff...
Go ahead. Oh. Think we have a portable mic. There we go.
This is good? All right.
Yep.
We recommend, we do recommend that over the course of the next year and beyond, the town staff, boards, and committees and residents engage in related research and planning on these same issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Recognize the speaker at microphone number two.
Ben McTannett, Old Stone Brook. In nationally, we are, well, in bigger cities at least, we're having a problem of increased homelessness, a problem of increased housing costs, in large part because communities are restricting zoning, restricting development, and limiting the amount of housing. I do not see how we're going to solve a housing problem by limiting construction of housing. Thank you.
I recognize the speaker at microphone four.
I'd like to move the previous question.
Motion to cut off debate has been made and seconded. All those in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Debate is cut off. We will now vote. All those in favor of the non-binding resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The motion fails. We will now move to Article 34.
Okay.
Let me just, just one second. We're at that hour of 10:30 or a little after where we sort of have this informal rule, we will take stock of where we are. I for one, although I really could use the extra $20 tomorrow night, would like to finish tonight. Is that the general sense of town meeting at this point?
Yes.
Okay, we will continue. Ms. Fredericks, let me read the motion. Tara Fredericks moves that the town adopt the non-binding resolution as set forth in the article. Do I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Fredericks, you may speak to your motion. I believe you said it would take about two minutes.
Yep, this is the same thing, but enact a number of... So the number of permits would be limited. And again, this is just to study it. Lots of towns have done this. Again, SJC upheld the building permit limit. You can make a building permit based on the type of housing, of the large mansions or whatever. So that's it. Same thing. Thank you. I hope you vote for something.
Okay. Board of Selectmen recommendation.
Mr. Moderator, the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously to not recommend this article for many of the same reasons I cited in my comments on Article 33.
FinCom?
The Finance Committee voted to not recommend this article.
Town meeting members, recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Is it working again? It is. Danny Factor 11 Davis Road. I'd like to speak in favor of this petition because I think it's a good refinement of the last one. I understand that there are a lot of folks that think that a full building moratorium is going too far, but the bottom line is, is that if anyone here, and I think if it's most of you, voted for the plastic ban, plastic bag ban, I think we all recognize that there are a limited amount of resources and to focus our housing on public necessity. Knowing the petitioner, I know that she does favor building in the case where there is absolute public necessity, such as building a firehouse or housing the homeless, for example. So the idea of creating a conversation where the Board of Selectmen will be asked by town meeting to talk about this urgent issue, where we have waitlists and waitlists of low-income people who can't get housing, where we have homeless people who are sleeping in their cars, you know, to find a way to focus our housing on the people who have most need. And I know it was a wonderful thing that we, you know, proved today, 31 apartments for people who are not quite at the lowest income level, but somewhere between low and middle. But we have a crisis. Housing is a human right. We need to do a lot better, and we need to focus and concentrate our housing where there is most need. So passing this resolution, which is non-binding, will force the conversation to our new Board of Selectmen to do something about the people who are in most need. Thank you very much.
Recognize the speaker at microphone three.
It's not blinking. My comments are to all of these articles. As Tara notes, I'm very much in favor of what she's trying to do, which is to start a conversation. Tara, I think you've accomplished that. I think all of these articles are overkill. We can discuss each one. I won't because they're really not... They're non-binding resolutions. The Selectmen already said they're not in favor of it, so there's no reason why they would discuss it just because of non-binding resolution passes. I think we'll accomplish more if we agree that, as most people have here, that better planning, better coordination, including with the water district, is beneficial, but passing moratoriums, limiting the size of houses and all this stuff, you know, including land clearing articles which turn out to be another anti-construction article, that's not going to work. So let's just very quickly defeat all of them and maybe, maybe go home, but I doubt it.
Recognize the speaker at microphone two.
Call the previous question.
Second.
Motion to cut off debate has been made and seconded. All those in favor of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Debate is cut off. We will vote. All those in favor of the non-binding resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The nays have it, the motion fails. We'll move to Article 35.
Thank you for sticking with us. See the stick figure? Ha-ha.
Ms. Fredericks, sorry, I need to read the motion.
Sorry.
Tara Fredericks moves that the town adopt the non-binding resolution as set forth in the article. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. You may speak to your motion.
Okay, so this is just the percentage of land cleared. It's a town zoning, excuse me, not a zoning bylaw, so it's not grandfatherable. There's got to be a basis for it, like water or other legitimate planning purpose. This is just a picture that shows you. You can see it online. And be it resolved. Oh, by the way, still a couple seconds. FinCom didn't come to a recommendation. They had a really interesting conversation. I don't think I've seen so much planning going on in Acton town government, except for the half hour that they spent arguing about this. And I loved it because one of them said, "Wait a second. We put limits on property for the Clean Water Act," like that people can't go in the buffer zone. So what's wrong with limiting, you know, I think that was one of the comments, but people can speak for themselves if they want to. But either way, I hope you guys vote for it. Thanks.
Board of Selectmen recommendation on the motion under Article 35.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Board of Selectmen unanimously voted to not recommend this article to town meeting. I would note that the description of the article in the warrant is confusing and inaccurate. It says there's a state-enabling law and then references the Cape Cod Commission model bylaws. There is a state-enabling law that granted special powers to, and set up, the Cape Cod Commission. I'm not sure that state-enabling law would allow Acton to even adopt such a bylaw. And it says Acton has a land-clearing limit bylaw already, which is not true. So for those reasons and our belief that these kind of planning initiatives should come up through the normal planning process and not be an ad hoc decision by town meeting, we voted to not recommend this article.
Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for the shout-out. Ms. Fredericks, for our meetings, we do think they are the most fun meetings in town, but that said, we did not recommend this article.
Town meeting members, recognize the speaker at microphone one.
Jim Snyder Grant, Half Moon Hill. This is a statement from Green Acton Directors. Green Acton supports this article because of the importance of preserving green and open space in our community, which sequesters carbon and helps mitigate impacts of our climate emergency and helps arrest biodiversity loss. We also believe that this initiative can advance the town's sustainability goals while respecting the rights of landowners. Thank you.
Recognize the speaker at microphone two.
Call the previous question.
Second.
All those in favor of motion of cutting off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. We will vote. The motion carries. We will vote. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails.
All right. The next one is-
Article 36. Tara Fredericks moves that the town adopt the non-binding resolution as set forth in the article.
I'm going to let everybody go home. Thank you. So this is just a couple of numbers. They just gave us numbers. I'm going to estimate like 3%.
There was no second?
Oh.
Is there a second? Thank you.
So just some numbers, between 2,012 and 2018, the number over 4,000 square feet is about 13. Staff was kind enough to estimate between 3,000 and 4,000, in case anybody's interested, at 77 units. So in total, we have 223 housing units that are over 4,000 square feet. And it was interesting to note that there's 12 condos that are between 3,000 and 4,000. So, thank you.
Board of Selectmen recommendation?
I'm kidding. The Board of Selectmen does not recommend this article.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee does not recommend this article.
Town meeting members, I recognize the speaker at microphone one.
I just want to provide a data point. I recently moved here from Newton where McMansions were really a big issue. I don't know if that's showing up here yet or not, but it appears that the economics dictate that if you're going to develop a piece of land, the return on investment is higher if you build something huge than if you build, for example, a multi-unit house. And in terms of shape of the housing stock, it's an issue that I've seen personally. And I want to applaud the bylaw change to encourage accessory apartments because that was hard to do elsewhere. But I did want to ask a question that applies to this whole series of amendments, which is what is the timescale for the next revision of the town's master plan?
I have no answer.
Ms. Fredericks, do you have an answer?
Are you kidding? I'm here because there is no plan.
I mean, is there not a statutory responsibility to update the master plan periodically?
Do we have an answer here? This seems like a reasonable question.
I don't have a specific timeline for updating the plan, but I know we are always looking at our 2020 plan and making periodic updates to that, but I don't have a specific answer to that right now.
I do have one answer, that they're enacting policy that is by the Board of Selectmen as opposed to town meeting weighing in. Thank you.
Recognize the speaker at microphone number four.
Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
Second.
Thank you. Motion to cut off debate has been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Debate is cut off. We will now vote on the motion under the Article 36. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. We will move on to Article 37. Another non-binding resolution from citizens' petition. I'll read the motion. Tara Fredericks moves that the town adopt the non-binding resolution as set forth in the article. Do I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Fredericks, you may proceed.
All right, I'm going to make this go fast because I want you to vote on the Kmart thing. So even though a lot of people voted for the funding on Monday, other people would like very much to take out the turning lanes that increase pedestrian, result in choke points in front of local businesses, and result in a design that's too rectilinear or destroying too many trees. The safety islands, a lot of people feel are required because they're too, the roads are too wide. Family of four got run down in Revere while waiting on a safety island. One child was killed. Mitigating risk that you create by increasing the crosswalk length. Residential developer at the con, has proposed condos, and he requires the turning lanes, although that developer supposedly is not going to do something. We don't know. A developer probably will come, and they'll need those turning lanes. So we're effectively facilitating and priming the pump for the development at risk to our kids and pedestrians. These myths that we'll lose the money, I guess that doesn't matter because we're going to be pushing forward, but the proponents claim that all these community meetings called for the lanes, but it's kind of curious to me at least that the developer showed up right around then. This is just an example of the Charter Road on the left was the old design, and then the new hyper-highway design on the right. And then the delay I already talked about before, that this is the projected delay, including the condos at Kmart, and I think that we shouldn't be planning to that. And this is what it looks like with all of the turning lanes. So I hope you vote yes to this non-binding resolution to direct the Board of Selectmen to take out the turning lanes.
Board of Selectmen have a recommendation?
Yes. The second left-hand turn lanes have nothing to do with accommodating developers.
Sure.
Left-hand turn lanes allow for a safer and more predictable driving pattern for motorists and will make pedestrian crossings safer than they are now. Double-turn lanes are quite common in current intersection design. While we may have mixed feelings about automobiles, they are the mode of transportation in suburban communities. Automobiles are how we do our food shopping and errands and get our children to their activities and around town. This is the case even if we move from SUVs to electric and driverless cars. The tree that will be lost on Mass Avenue by the Parker Damon Playground is not due to the second left turn lane. The road needs to shift to that side to provide for the ADA-compliant sidewalk, the bike lane, and a necessary retaining wall. The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously not to recommend Article 37.
Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee also voted unanimously to not recommend this article.
Okay, I will open it up for debate. I recognize the speaker at microphone number one.
Danny Factor 11 Davis Road. Let's remember that when we're talking about turning lanes that widen the streets significantly, some of the most important pedestrian stakeholders are people with disabilities, Acton-Boxborough High School students, seniors, and frail individuals. A person with a physical or mental disability shouldn't have to be put in a position or feel out of breath or anxious when they cross a street because they're surrounded by cars that filled in spaces when the streets were widened. A parent of an AB high school student, when they imagine their kid crossing the streets to go to Sorrento's for lunch, shouldn't have to imagine their kid having to travel 20 extra feet in the street when alternatively, by eliminating the turning lanes, the whole crossing, not only the sidewalk, which we've made more accessible by Article 5, but also the streets themselves could be pedestrian-friendly. Now, frail seniors that I've talked to tell me again and again that the things that they care about, once they hit the curb and walk into a street, is one, to have distances as short as possible, two, to have as few as possible cars in their way, and three, to have cars at the slowest speed possible. But because of the added turning lanes, the town presentation, even the town presentation showed that two of the four crossings in the main intersection will be longer than before, not shorter, and all of the crossings on 27 and 111 outside of the intersection will be longer, not shorter. And so much of this is because of the turning lanes. So town meeting members, you decide if you want a plan that is more car-friendly or more walkable-friendly. If the end result of the street widening is more congested streets during rush hour and cars moving unsafely fast for pedestrians during non-rush hours, that is car-friendly. It's not pedestrian-friendly, and we can do better by voting yes on this resolution. To widen the streets is a terrible mistake for people with disabilities, students, seniors, and frail individuals. To go through all the trouble that we've done in improving the sidewalks to make it accessible, and then to make a pedestrian's journey less safe when they get to a corner or they have to cross a street, is an unfair trade-off, which is in favor of the drivers and at the expense of the pedestrians. So please vote yes on this resolution. Our Acton 2020 master plan made promises to people with disabilities and other pedestrians about creating a true pedestrian-friendly Kelly's Corner in town. The addition of the turning lanes takes back that promise that we made to pedestrians in the master plan. The addition of the turning lanes is a big step in the wrong direction. It's harmful for people with disabilities, harmful for kids, harmful for seniors, and harmful for frail individuals. As a result, please vote yes on this resolution and send this matter back to the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee to update the plan that we passed with a revision to remove the turning lanes. Thank you.
Recognize the speaker at microphone number two.
I'm Larry Canob, Betsy Ross Circle. I'm speaking not as a member of any committee, but as a private citizen. We've already heard about the merits of the turning lanes. We talked about it last night. We voted on it last night. We heard it about again today from the Board of Selectmen recommendation or lack of recommendation. I want to talk about something different. I want to talk about the general principle here that- about something different. I want to talk about the general principle here that many times Town Meeting has to deal with problems that require very complicated solutions. I've been a member of the Kelly's Corner Steering Committee for five years. We started from a lot of abstract ideas, came up with a plan that we brought to you last year. You said, nope, not good enough. Go back and try better. And we came back with a plan that was better. But it was a complicated plan. It's got a lot of different pieces in it. And what we're seeing here is the assumption that we can take one piece and we can remove that piece from the complex solution without having any impact on the rest of the plan. I think we're setting a dangerous precedent if we allow this particular motion to pass. I urge you all to vote against this particular article. Thank you.
Recognize the Speaker at microphone four.
Hi, I'm David Martin. I live on High Street. It's just wrong to say that the crosswalks and other things at this, the redesigned intersection are less safe than what's there now. It's just wrong. So there's only one crosswalk at the main intersection that's significantly longer than the existing intersection, and that's 10 feet longer. The, you know, the word, the length of 20 feet was mentioned. There's no crosswalk in the entire project that's 20 feet longer. The crosswalks at the entrance have islands in the middle for people to pause in the middle. There is no such thing today. There's no place to wait halfway across. And I understand that there was an accident in Revere where someone was killed. That's not the fault of the island. It's not the fault of your seatbelt. If you get in an accident, wear your seatbelt. Statistically, islands make crosswalks 40% safer. If you add the flashing beacons, they're 75% safer. All the crosswalks in this intersection or this project are safer than what were there before. The timing is correct for people to cross the street without becoming breathless. That's not true today. So, you know, all the arguments that say that this is less safer are just wrong.
Recognize the Speaker at microphone number two.
Lisa Franklin, Windsor Avenue. I have a question, Mr. Moderator. We had this question and the discussion and these slides last night. I'm not sure why we're doing this again.
The answer to the question is, this is a citizens petition, which is a non-binding resolution. It requires only 10 signatures of citizens to place such a petition on the warrant, and that is why we are discussing it this evening, even though it seems remarkably similar to what we talked about under Article 5 last night.
Then I would like to comment that the Commission on Disabilities was unable to agree as to whether or not this was a disability issue and how we felt about it.
Thank you. I recognize the Speaker at microphone number one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I call the previous question.
A motion to cut off debate has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say nay. Debate is cut off. We will vote on this non-binding resolution. All those in favor of the motion behind the non-binding resolution, please say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The motion fails. We will now move to Article 38. We are in the home stretch. This is another non-binding resolution. I register intent to purchase the Kmart parcels. Requires a majority vote. The motion is Shawna Wilkerson moves that the town adopt the non-binding resolution as set forth in the article. Do I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Ms. Wilkerson?
It's Wilkinson.
Wilkinson. Excuse me. I apologize.
We're all kind of speaking. Is that okay?
So what I would suggest is, we've limited this to four minutes, five minutes, four minutes. If you would introduce yourselves, each of you, to Town Meeting members so they are not confused like I just was about who was speaking.
Shawna Wilkinson, West Acton.
Hi, Elizabeth Oshie, Kelly Road.
Hannah Patel, Nadine Road.
Maria Pickett, Joseph Freed Lane. Thank you all for still being here at this hour. We are asking for the people to vote yes on Article 38. We want to ensure a transparent and community-driven process regarding what will happen with the Kmart land. Voting yes on Article 38 does not obligate the town to commit any form of funding. It simply allows for the opportunity to have a dialogue about the potential for the parcel with community input. Voting yes sends a message that we care about the strategy for the development of our community. The Kmart parcel is a unique piece of land given its location. The AB School District is the heart and pride of our town and the reason why many of us have moved here. We hope that by voting yes on Article 38, it will demonstrate how important this particular parcel of land is to our community for many reasons. The abundance of comments containing ideas for the use of the land that we petitioners have received from the general public via email, social media, and person-to-person contact reflect how emotionally attached people are to having a voice in this incredibly impactful decision. It is the final opportunity for the town to own property and establish a community-supported vision for our town center. There are unmet needs of students in a town that has prioritized safety and mental health. There are needs and desires of parents and seniors, along with many other people. It actually hurts our hearts to think of the sheer number of students, parents, and seniors that will be forced to pass that property, often multiple times a day, and have a visual memorial of such a failed opportunity. Something is going to happen there. Let's not leave it up to chance. Let's have input that reflects the community vision for a walkable and sustainable town center. Who would oppose the voices of the community being heard? Please vote yes on Article 38 to have a voice in these important decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. Board of Selectmen, recommendation? Mr. Benson?
Yes. The town's proposed purchase of the Kmart parcel is a complex issue. Beyond a purchase price of at least $7 million, there are significant unknown costs related to the Kmart building itself. In assessing the acquisition of the Kmart parcel, the Board of Selectmen is very mindful of the financial impact to taxpayers, particularly our growing senior population of the new Twin Elementary School and the North Acton Fire Station. We feel the best way to control the future of the Kmart parcel is through zoning. Any change to mixed-use zoning to allow housing on the parcel would require a two-thirds vote of Town Meeting. John Mancherati spoke with Stop &amp; Shop, which owns the Kmart parcel, last September and again a few weeks ago. Stop &amp; Shop confirmed it has no plans to develop the parcel and will retain the parcel in their real estate portfolio. Within the next month, we expect to achieve a two-year safe harbor on 40B development in Acton. This would allow the Zoning Board of Appeals to reject any comprehensive permit application for a 40B development during the two-year safe harbor. The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously not to recommend Article 38.
And the Finance Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee is highly sympathetic to the desire to protect Kelly's Corner from residential development, but we do not feel that this is the correct path to that goal. We have already seen, even at this meeting, what happens when a property is purchased without a clear plan in place. We end up with housing. Not to sound like a broken record, but the Finance Committee voted unanimously to not recommend this article as it does not have a fully fleshed-out plan to put to the electorate for an affirmative vote. The loss of existing tax revenue is not in our best interest. We recommend that the petitioners, as well as the town, redouble their efforts to meet the state-imposed requirements of 40B, which ultimately is the best and only way to protect from unfettered development at Kelly's Corner and return Acton to being able to own our own destiny through our own zoning laws.
Thank you. I'll now open it up to Town Meeting members. Recognize the Speaker at microphone four.
Ray Jacoby, 554 Great Elm Way. I feel compelled to say, I think this is a well-intentioned, misguided proposition. The implication is that the town does not solicit input and committed input, and there's nothing further than truth. I've lived in town for 32 years. I think our town government works very, very hard to solicit input when you work with them, as opposed to assuming that they're not. So I think, I appreciate the intent. I think you were taking the wrong path. And again, a non-binding resolution that doesn't incorporate input means we're not working together, as opposed to opposing each other.
Recognize the Speaker at microphone one.
Danny Factor 11 Davis Road. I want to speak in favor of this petition, but also to say that as far as the last speaker who spoke, I think that this resolution intends to do just that. I'm so impressed by the petitioners, how their vision of the property, seeing that their parents and that the property is adjacent to our schools, that they say that, they recognize that this property stands at the heart of our town. And because of that, they think that the disposition of this land should be decided not by developers, but through a democratic process, which means to bring the conversation to the Board of Selectmen, to have the discussion about the disposition of the Kmart property that the town has really never had in open meeting. So I think that this, voting yes on this petition accomplishes just that. It creates that transparent process that I think we all want. So I would urge you to vote yes. And I would also ask Mr. Moderator for a request for an electronic vote on this warrant article. Thank you.
Recognize the Speaker at microphone two.
Larry Cana, Betsy Ross Circle. I'm going to put my committee hat back on. I'm the Chair of the Economic Development Committee. The EDC voted unanimously against this particular article. We've heard over the last couple of nights that the town of Acton does a really good job about a bunch of different things. But one of the things that we have to acknowledge is that the town of Acton is really bad at commercial real estate development. This is a commercially-zoned property, and I think we should leave it to the current zoning and various other tools in order to determine what's best for this. We urge no vote on this particular article. Thank you.
Recognize the Speaker at microphone four.
Hi, David Martin, High Street. You know, I really understand that people want to have input into this, but it's virtually impossible for a democracy to manage and decide on what to do here, right? If you ask a lot of people what they want to do with, if you ask 100 people what they want to do with the Kmart property, you're going to get 100 different answers. There's not going to be a majority. And it will be virtually impossible for us to decide. And whatever, what we might decide to do might not be economically viable. It's a lose proposition for us. There's no way that we can be successful managing this project. Democracy is very good at choosing between alternatives, reacting to a proposal, saying what we like and what we don't like. But we can't, we can't manage this in Town Meeting.
Recognize the Speaker at microphone one.
Laura Krueger, Washington Drive. My understanding is that this is just to get us more time to be able to give input and that we won't be, people aren't asking to decide anything, but we're to keep this going as a discussion with Board of Selectmen and Planning Board. And that the, that, what is it? Zoning bylaws can be overridden by 40B if we don't get to that in time.
That is correct.
And just an example, in, at RJ Gray, they had open gym on Tuesdays and Thursdays for kids who just come play. And 60 to 70 kids went every day, and so they shut it down because they don't know what to do with that many kids. So I don't know if you've ever been in CVS or at Kelly's Corner when high school and junior high get out, but it's just kids wandering around. And when the fields are open, they all go there in their early release days. So they have nowhere to go and are spending all this time and money on health and wellness. But the main things that we know help that, ending isolation, healthy socialization, exercise, all of those things, we could at least have some input if we were to do this. And with my understanding, it is to just reopen discussion and keep it transparent. And it doesn't mean we have to buy it, but maybe we can have some say as to how Stop &amp; Shop, that's developers, if that's what happens. Thanks.
Recognize the Speaker at microphone two.
Call the previous question.
A motion to cut off debate has been made and seconded. All those in favor of cutting off debate, say aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. We will vote. This requires a majority, and I will honor the request to do this electronically. So we do know the result is complete accuracy. So I'd ask people who still have their clickers, that haven't thrown them away yet, turn them on. Everybody has their on, has their clickers on, so I will open the voting window now. And I declare the voting window closed. I declare that the motion has failed. We are now nearing the end. We are to the, what's called the non-monetary consent agenda, which are Articles 39 through 51. And I guess I have the motion here. Ms. Green moves that the town take up the 13 articles in the consent calendar on pages 81 through 96 of the warrant. Articles 39, 40, 41, 42, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 49, 50, and 51. Do I have a second? We will do this the way we did the other consent agenda, which is, I will read each number. If two or more people want to hold, please say hold. Otherwise, we will vote them all as a package. If there are ones held, we will vote those separately. 39, amend general bylaws, stormwater management revisions. 40, amend zoning bylaw, stormwater. 41, amend zoning map, 16 Knox Trail and 585 Main Street. Amend zoning bylaw, housekeeping corrections. 43, except street, Braybrook Road. 44, except land gift, 49 Piper Road. I'm sorry, was that, was that a hold? Okay. 45, authorize easements. 46, highway reimbursement program, Chapter 90. 47, insurance proceeds. 48, gifts or grants. 49, federal and state reimbursement aid, 50, performance bonds, 51, sale of foreclosed properties. Hearing none being held. This actually requires a two-thirds vote, but I'll just try it with a voice vote. They all, because some require two-thirds, we have, since we're voting them as a package, we have to vote all of them as a two-thirds. So we'll try this as a voice vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye. All those opposed, say nay. I declare that the vote carries unanimously. We have one more motion.
Mr. Moderators, with great pleasure that I move that we dissolve the town meeting.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Thank you.